Morning, Mizer.
It's not for me. I just bring, I just bring the gifts.
Oh, okay. Is there a return policy?
Nope. I think you, I think you already read it, but...
Dan, did you find out any information?
Um, yep, well, I'm assuming that one was gonna be from it too, but yes, I went to the archives, to the June 60th, so I found a large spread of different photos, um, write-ups.
Okay.
On that, so, yep. And I got this, the photo use, I can just, this week's.
Oh, okay. Pardon? Haven't seen it. I need to go up there and just add coffee time.
Morning, Glenn.
On this one. I thought we would have some. I know we get emailed the paper, the request, but I was hoping it was in here, but I don't see it.
It's on there. Does anybody have it?
What?
I know she, I thought she said she emailed it, but I don't think I've seen it.
I didn't like, even an email didn't say that.
Oh, jeez. Okay. Nine o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order. The Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda, do we have any items to add? I know one of them's recorder fees. I remember. Go ahead and inform me, we gotta add recorder fees.
I don't know if we can talk about it when Ken is here, but I'd like to talk about some gravel, and I'd like to talk about, um, what were we at? On a blank, we just talked about it.
The bridge?
Oh, the bridge.
The bridge.
Yeah.
John Shields, okay.
We've got some information on that, we might wanna, he might bring that up anyway.
So we just had gravel on our highway department?
Yeah.
I want to add, um, health insurance, just under other business for discussion.
What was that, Jamie?
Uh, health insurance.
Health insurance.
And then... I, I think I could do it under portfolio updates, but we just need to discuss some scoria for the landfill, so whether we wanna make it a budget item or do it under portfolios.
That's, we'll just put it under other business.
Okay, so scoria for the landfill.
That way we... Any other additions?
Um, yes. The Jim's Purse. Is it on here? I didn't see it. It was on last.
Okay, I wrote down Jim's Purse.
Jim's Purse, okay.
Probably shouldn't call it that, should probably call it, uh, whatever his official title. But that's fine, we know what we're talking about. Uh, any other additions? Any none, do I have a motion to approve agenda as it ended?
One second, Jamie.
Any other discussion? Any none, Rick? Jamie?
Aye.
Um, Travis?
Aye.
Uh-oh.
Liza?
Liza? Aye.
Oh, here we go. Liza?
Aye.
How would I, motion approved.
Thank you, Don, for the copies.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Ah, oh yeah, minutes.
Um, do we need, like, it says April 3rd on here, but the minutes are April 4th, does that matter?
Pardon?
It says April 3rd minutes, but...
On the agenda.
On the agenda, however, they're from April 4th. Or maybe they were from the 3rd, I don't know.
As long as they're correct in the minutes. I think it was the 4th, wasn't it?
I can't see that far.
Oh, it was the 3rd.
It was the 3rd.
So on the minutes, it should say the 3rd.
So the minutes need to say April 3rd.
Good catch.
I can read it.
Any other corrections to the minutes or additions?
I'll move to approve as amended.
Allison, Rick. Here we now, no other discussion? Travis?
Aye.
Rick? Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Uh, review and approve vouchers. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, great. I was like, I read that, that was De'Angelo, I didn't read that.
You found yours? I couldn't find that.
Well, definitely in there. It's definitely in file. Sorry, thank you. We will get our life together.
Well, we were open for five, so.
Maybe we all need to go and come back and start over.
Right, we do.
Let's start the day over.
You're hot. You're flirting with people not coming back.
I'm not saying I wouldn't do the first one.
Right.
I'm asleep, I wake up again.
Right.
If you haven't been to a meeting before, we go through all the bills, and that could last till about 9:30, so feel free to go use the facilities or something in the meantime. It'll be pretty quiet up here.
Yeah.
I haven't done one yet this year.
Well, so here, Lina, we're under budget. As long as you haven't gotten rid of all the pictures, you take it at mine.
I still got them.
I got a pile over there too, I forgot, walked away in here.
That's okay.
Caught up with the employee at the urgent office. It's just the, uh...
I was thinking that too, and then I saw that it said landfill in one of the sheets.
I was heading way to back once he was, can't be straight.
I think there's one on the road too. I can do a portfolio update, but this, this bill is way less than what we had budgeted.
Oh, this is that form, okay.
The only thing, we didn't get the product they ordered.
Pardon?
We didn't get the product.
This year, they didn't get it?
We got, we got the material, but we didn't get the, we did, uh... We did, uh, we did 13,000, and this is what they brought, but mistaken, because they didn't change it, so we have about 13,000 in our budget. We won't do anything else, 26.
We're okay with what we got, but it was changed.
They just, the other stuff wasn't there, they don't need to change it.
Okay. Oh, was it? Was it on the order that they got, that was supposed to be the 3000s?
Yeah, that's what it is, because we originally budgeted 25, and they come back, they did 32, or 32 or 35, I don't remember, but anyways, they brought the wrong, they screwed it up, man. They brought the wrong stuff.
So they give us a deal on that?
Not really, but yeah. Yes, no.
I was gonna say, if we had, if it was on the order, and they brought the wrong stuff, then...
But they haven't given the anchor, they did, they said they could pump it out, but they didn't know if they could pump it off or not, or whatever.
Where's civic bus?
Something with 911.
Liza, Jamie?
Do you know what civic bus is?
No, I looked at that one too, and I didn't understand it.
Pardon?
I looked at that one too, and I didn't know what that was either.
Carmen said it's something with 911 where people can call in and they can get alerts based off this program. It's kinda like a reverse 911 type thing, I think is what she meant it to be. Did Terry sign it or did Carmen? I didn't know. Terry, Terry did. We can ask Carmen, I mean it... People can sign up for alerts on it or something. It must be like the, I'd say weather stuff, like that.
Oh, like a weather one?
Like at all.
Because I know Vine Link does, or Savin does the...
Other ones.
Other notifications, like the downs and stuff like that.
It's not like the amber or the silver alerts, or is that different?
Yeah, I think those are different, but I don't know. What company actually does those?
Oh, you might look at these, I just signed them. Make this better, you can...
We got a pile today, Jamie. We got a pile today.
I know, it doesn't, it's not ending. It's software used to put weather alerts over the cellphones.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're allowed so much within a calendar year, and then the...
Why didn't they just take this out of there? I said, why didn't they take this out of there?
I know.
Yeah.
That's why I've held on to that.
I mean, I haven't, I haven't used it.
I've never used it, so I don't know, but it just seems like we have that for quite a while.
Just right here, and then whatever.
Might be a panel's question.
Take it out of that little jar.
What's the stamp on it is?
66 cents?
Only reason I know a lot of us is because Aiden had just been born.
Oh, really?
I noticed that too, but we did, maybe we can fix something, but that shouldn't have really been on it, but I noticed that too, uh, nothing's changed back there. They definitely don't get better cable.
Yeah, it says balance folder at $20.
Why do we do this all the time? Been there since I've been here.
Yeah.
What's it for?
He only, he only works so many hours for the, that board, so then he can claim... Sir, I know Carmen's checked into it, but I'm not...
So it's, uh, it's a part unemployment then?
Right.
Oh, that's why it's continuing.
It's been going on forever.
Yeah. Because you can, you can qualify based on certain number of hours, and then, yeah, it's...
It's only, he only works so many hours with the board, but certain terms kind of be, uh, actually.
Yeah.
So that's the PMC board, or a different board?
If you have, implying a donor, who's the chair then?
Right, okay. Right. Oh, somehow I forgot about that.
Should've put it on there, I suppose, but... Some questions, how would I want to do it? They don't have a line anymore, so...
So you have, it's gonna get nice, full on, like, this parking, okay. You want here?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I'm seeing it kind of be done, but, oh.
So Dan, did your drawing start yet? Did your drawing start yet? Okay, I didn't, I didn't get a phone call, so...
I'm still waiting for mine.
When this voucher on the...
Do we have to have?
It's blank, does it mean? It's...
The reason why is they mail their, their voucher, or email their vouchers to me, and if they don't come in the mail, they don't have the back print. I don't have the back printed, so that's why I just kept that for signature.
And Jean has to sign it.
Oh, for Jean's, okay. Okay. I thought the other one had Craig's signature on this page.
I don't think so.
Maybe that was the other one.
Maybe I missed it. No.
The mail doesn't get them here on time. Huh? The mail doesn't get them here on time.
Well, the pony express or...
She nails them either Thursday or Friday, and they're still not here. So I, that's why they come by email, and I just print the one side.
For, for as much as we expect out of ponies.
We could've kept them. We could've kept them and used them.
Strangely nuts.
Yeah? Yeah?
Carrier pigeons?
A lot of hawks around here, little predators, just to make sure your pigeons are in good condition.
So would you like insurance?
Could we do something with, uh...
Oh, man.
Wonder if that's not something we could do, I don't know. If that's something you wanna talk to me about, so...
Supposedly it's a pickup.
What's Everbridge?
Yeah.
What's that? Red.
Everbridge, I don't remember what that is.
Some of the... But I know places that have it, and they are businesses.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if there's another option on that.
I don't know, that's because...
Speed video monitors doing that.
Or if there's stuff on there we wouldn't need to have.
Red wasp hots.
What's when you run in Arizona a year ago?
Wow.
Put a TV in town, and give them two channels.
That sounds angry.
Right?
Red wasp hots.
She got away with it, because she took away all her cable, and he said, well, he got us from my... So, okay. Make a basic.
It does that. Speed video. Speed video. I got that up there. About done down there, Jamie?
No. No, I'm not. It just, they just keep appearing.
Gwen's taking them back down there, doing them again.
Well, we got that one here. We use recycle, right?
Yeah.
Jean, do you got the lead department?
Yeah.
Why do they need a cash box?
I don't know. A cash box?
Do you know, Glenn?
I do not, but...
I just didn't know.
I will find out.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Gina, almost to the end. It's just this West River bill.
Yeah.
Is it multiple choice?
Used to be pretty good at prefixes, but not anymore.
Morning, Jen.
Morning.
We're almost there.
We got three and a half minutes. So now you're after a sign if you're still wanting what you want?
No. That's incredible.
Just in the seats. I'd send myself an open hand. Take a picture. I didn't, I didn't send him, I said, wait till after the meeting, cause he'll respond right away. Did the pressure change in there?
I feel like I gotta sneeze.
Is this for a training or anything?
Yeah, he, he did some, I don't know, for some training. I didn't know that. I'm gonna say what it's for.
Must have had a vehicle, cause it turned on land.
I think it took a short bit, but it's, um.
Make you wait a few minutes, Jen. So, are these different accounts?
So this. This one.
That's here we have.
This one.
And these were colliers. And we got two, three columns. Why, why does this? Why do they separate them? This is a little higher than normal, isn't it? Usually I like one fifty six, cause it's. Why not, yeah, or why not have one voucher? Okay. But again, some better voucher. Okay.
So now we found that. If we can discuss it under that. I thought, I thought this was that, but then I found this. And there's a lot of papers.
Yeah, these are two separate things.
So what it is?
That's the bond payment on the remob.
Unless he can bring up, but in the portfolio.
Seems a lot higher than normal. Yeah, I thought it was like a hundred and fifty six thousand. It's like one ninety six.
Thirty six thousand dollars worth of interest.
Right. But there might be.
Cause it's buried in this one.
The bonds, different pieces, I don't.
Cause like you said, I.
The interest rate's going up too, so.
Well, if it's bonded, it shouldn't change.
And they're two very different things.
So it's, I don't, do you know how long it goes? I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
Jamie will second.
Rick seconded already, beat ya. Any questions on the?
She can add, I don't care.
Travis, how you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Okay, Jen, strata temporary use permit number six three one.
Okay, this is the renewal for strata. For portable crushing and screening operations, stockpile of material onsite and imported material. A portion, about twenty four acres of the southwest quarter of section twenty six, township one forty four north, range eighty four west. Um, he had no projects planned, but wanted to renew it just in case. He does have some stockpile left, but not much. Uh, you guys wanted him to be present and agree with you? Yup, so.
I got some questions if you wanna come up.
Yeah.
Whichever side, doesn't matter.
That's right. My question was, I went over and looked at it. Do you guys have any plan for, uh, reclamation or what, or on this project, or how this is gonna?
Yes, uh, it got kinda late last year. We started sloping all the banks, Ian, if you noticed that.
Yeah.
And, uh, we still have quite a bit of rock on the bottom, so we still have some topsoil piles towards the west side that, once we kinda finish getting some of that material out, but we'd like to start, towards the railroad tracks and stuff like that, we'd like to start seeding and getting some grass growing back on there.
Are, I mean, is that the, like the west side, is that the final slope then, or what?
That's pretty much it. It's, uh, we still have some material stockpile on there, but if you look right to the west where that, uh, fence line is, there's a topsoil pile that will spread back out on there also. But just waiting for, seeing if anything comes up, because like I said, we still have some piles there, but towards the north, we're looking at reclaiming pretty much all of that and probably seeding and putting, uh, that back in the grass. We sloped it and put topsoil down last year, but, uh, didn't seed anything yet.
I guess, I had, I got a head of call from my neighbors that are concerned on the well and stuff that's so deep into water. Is there any way that a guy could put some clay in there and cap that bottom or anything?
It is kinda clayey already.
I know that, I did talk to the, there was, uh, when they removed the topsoil from, uh, that, uh, substation project, they stockpiled, it's right next door to you there. I mean, if you, you would need it, some material, you could probably get it from there.
And, and that would be something, if, if we could get, you know, if somebody needs a dump site or anything like that, if anybody, I mean, if there'd be, uh, uh, contact us or whatever the case were, we provided even for when they were there, and I don't know why they dumped it over there. We said we had actually provide a site for them for free, you know, because it is a hole and stuff, so we had provided a site for them for free to, to push in and I don't know if somebody else, uh, I believe it was Analog that actually got the trucking on that, so he probably had a site that was, you know, whoever he went through got a different bid on it.
Who you guys have, like, who's the owner of that pit down?
Uh, it's, uh, three people, Dakota Lang Group, DLG, and I'm actually part owner of that.
I was curious, I mean, it's still recorded as Gerald, that Aldrin, yeah.
You guys own the pit, but, and you own the twenty four acres too?
Yes.
I don't know, I guess, I was just curious, it's like what, what we could do to, you know, I, I don't know, it's like, uh, state water board has looked at anything, or have they talked to you guys at all?
Nope, nope, nothing, and, uh, one of the other things we possibly could do, and we can take a look at that, is the material kinda started dying off as it went to the south. So, we can actually, once we're done now, we can actually grab some of that material and kinda slope it down into the bottom to actually cap that bottom a little bit more if needed. Right now, we're just using it for turnaround area for semis and stuff, so when they pull in one approach, they can pull out the other approach.
That's why it's so much wider on that south end there. You'd be able to slope some of that.
We should be able to.
So like the rocks that you got laying there and stuff there, those would be probably in the bottom buried, you're not done, I'm assuming that, on that one, east slope there.
We just would slope it for now and then we'd drive down and get the rock off the bottom.
Cause it was, it was like all the way up to the top of the slope there, I imagine you weren't gonna leave it like that.
Yup, and we didn't do anything on the south side sloping yet. We were sloping the, the north, the east and the west, but the south side where the trucks are coming in and pulling through, that's where, that's why that is so wide yet.
Yeah, I guess, I wonder, I was wondering, just a curi- curiosity question is, I mean, they were hauling topsoil out of there that one, not long ago, or last fall?
Uh, subsoil.
Subsoil.
It was, you know, we stripped the top off, but they were using it for, uh, root zone material. So it was the kinda sandy, silty stuff. It wasn't, you know, there was probably, I don't know how many feet of that was prior to that. So it was, uh, that material there. There wasn't much topsoil on there, cause back in the day when, uh, whoever had that first, when Gerald had it, the topsoil was kind of stripped off and stockpiled a little bit. There was hardly anything there. It was kinda going more in sand.
I mean, cause this pit's been open for.
A long time.
Twenty plus years, I believe.
I looked up, the original permit was in twenty, two thousand and five, I believe.
Yeah.
Fisher opened that, at that time. You guys took over in what, twenty sixteen, I think?
Something like that.
Whatever.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's kinda hard to find some of it, but it was the subsoil that they were using, which was just a dirty sand. Uh, because they just needed area, it was root zone material, just an area for roots to grow into.
I guess my, my, my concern, I guess, would be is, I know that the weed, you guys have the weed board or spraying the weeds for you?
Yeah, we have a agreement with them where they kinda share the costs and stuff into spraying and stuff like that. That's why I'd like to get back and kinda start seeding some of it, so it li- uh, kinda limits some of the area that we have to spray.
Well, getting to that part, that's what I was wondering, if we couldn't, if you guys couldn't slope, uh, slopes a little bit more gradual, but because like on the west side, if that's almost completed, that's, I mean, it's washed out quite a bit already, you're gonna have a, I mean.
There's still a rock pile up there, and then the topsoil pile is sitting on the top also. We're kinda waiting till we finish the back so we can get that, and then we'll be able to slope it closer, but it's on, the topsoil pile's right on that west side on the top.
And I'll notice in the northwest corner too, there was a pretty good hole there. I don't, looked like he had started sloping, but you got down to the water and looked like the water had dissipated at this point and, and it wasn't completed either. I don't know if you were gonna fill that little, that hole in the back?
And I can look at that. I can't remember what that west, or that northwest corner kinda looked like all in there.
Looked like they had done some work and they had got down to a, a water pond or whatever and had it soaked away and then, you know, it's not completed the way it looked at that point. But I mean, the, the whole thing didn't look completed yet, but I mean.
Yeah.
I think the biggest concern is that if you're not, if you're done out there not doing anything, I mean, there's a big hole, but also if you guys truly are the landowners, you can choose to leave a big hole there if you want. Nobody can really tell you what to do with your land, but I think there was a question on what the recorder's office had listed as to who the landowner is, so maybe you wanna clarify that?
With the recorder?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, cause it had, I think it was still in Gerald's name, wasn't it, Rick?
Yes, it's still, as far as they can tell, it's still.
And I thought it was already changed, but I'll, I'll check on that.
Just for your pure purposes.
Okay.
You're recording, uh, as a lead, uh, lessy, you know.
Yup, stra- strata is.
Yeah, it's the last time it's been, anything's been updated on that, so. I mean, it doesn't say, the landowner, right, according to the, what she has, the landowner's actually Gerald, but obviously it's you guys.
Yes, yeah, and I'll stop and talk to her.
Needs to be updated, I guess, so.
Sometimes deeds don't get recorded. It happens a lot.
I just want something to come back for you and have a struggle, so I don't, I'll move to approve this. Temporary use permit six thirty one.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I guess I'm just, hopefully, my, my concern is that you guys, you know, I, I know it's gonna be a hole there, but if we can, you know, alleviate whatever we can to make that less.
Honestly, I'd like to probably get rid of it and sell it for pasture land, so we're gonna slope it, so it is hopefully marketable.
And the more, I guess, the more you can do with that, that portion, it'll be more marketable.
Yup.
Any other discussion? Are you done, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
I guess it doesn't matter, but I'm gonna go and name.
Jean will vote aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trey.
Thank you. Cato Properties temp use permit number six thirty two.
Okay, this is, um, Cato for drilling test holes for coal exploration as well as monitoring well installation. Uh, sections twenty nine and thirty two, township one forty five north, range eighty eight west, and sections one, two, three, eleven and twelve, township one forty four north, range eighty nine west. And I just put the same conditions on it that they've done in the past on their other temporary use permits for drilling test holes. And Darren's here.
Where is that about Darren?
He's got him out.
Gosh, ironic.
He's got my pictures.
Since this is my first time with a temp use permit, and if you, then if you haven't seen this before, the only reason you may be saying why is Cotonian temp use permit, everything that's in our permitted area is covered by mining permit and conditional use permits. This is outside of our current mining permit, just to give you a reference. This way.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Right down here is Zap, this is the paved road, heading north is Zap, highway two hundred's down here. Our mining permit line is right there now. These areas are, what we're proposing this year and next year may be added to the permit. So our temp use permit request is just for twenty twenty four test holes and, uh, monitoring wells to be installed. This is done anytime that any activity like this is done outside the existing permit. The last time it was done was actually three years ago in twenty one, so here I am requesting permission just for the area described, which, if you have a map attached, it's the same as this map, the area shaded in pink, we'll be doing some test holes. This has all been done in the past. We know where the coal is. This is for coal quality and depth and surface water monitoring, groundwater monitoring, installation. Um, it's actually nothing new, but this is the first time we're requesting a temp use permit in three years. So, that's all that you have on this. If, if we have a few minutes at the end, I'll keep you guys a mine update. The reason for the temp use permit is for exploration outside of our existing permit.
Got a question on there, just for.
Go, Rick.
Um, way over on the west side of that, we're, actually that, right there where you're, that portion there, that's on the other side of thirteen.
Yup.
What would we, what's your plans, or what will we do with that road?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Feel free to ask. Our mining permit, which may be added to this year, and you guys will be fully abreast of this with information. It, this is not requested to be put into our permit. It stops at the highway and actually doesn't include this either. This is in this temp use permit, so that we can drill test holes over here and install test wells here for, for groundwater monitoring. So, this in fact will never, it's not even in our contemplation about being put into.
It's just for groundwater monitoring?
Exactly.
Okay.
And there'll be no effects to county thirteen, like it's like right, it's right on thirteen, but it's really not?
That's pretty much a guarantee. I mean, none whatsoever. Our permit request, if it goes through all the channels, federal and state, will be on the east side of county thirteen.
Okay.
The, I'm saying this out of turn, but in the future, in a long ways down the future, county road twenty six up here may have some effects that we'll discuss at a later date, but not county road thirteen. The, these pink shaded areas excluding this are what we're contemplating adding to our existing mine permit. So this temp use permit is just for twenty four, for some test coal drilling. And let me add one more thing. The other requirement other than PSC temp use permit, or I mean, uh, county temp use permit is through the North Dakota PSC exploratory mining permit, which we already have in hand for twenty twenty four, GOS for those areas. That's the reason for the temp use permit, which happens every, every couple of years for exploration outside of the existing permit. Thank you.
You have a motion to approve.
I'll move, motion to approve it as presented.
You have a second? I'll second. Any further? Any further discussion, questions of Darren or? Any none? Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Permit number six thirty-three.
Okay, this is a temporary use permit from Oliver Wind for a temporarily lay down yard. It's located in the northwest quarter of section twenty-one, Township one forty-four north. Range eighty-four west. Um, it's about eight point two acres. And this was part of their conditional use permit, uh, twenty-three, ten, zero, one. It was approved by you guys in October. And it was just discussed at PNC that they would get a temporary use permit for the lay down yard for their transmission line project.
Whereabouts is that at?
Right by LOS.
Right down here by LOS?
Yeah.
Okay.
That has nothing to do. That has nothing to do then with, uh. Through, uh, citing, I mean, the road permits that they have active right now too, they're requesting? They're separate, okay. Okay. If they, it wasn't. We, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to this one there, alright.
Can you have a motion to approve Temp Permit six three-three?
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second? Do I have a second to? Approve Use Permit six three-three?
I'll second for discussion.
That was Jamie?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, any further discussion?
Is, I don't even know what I wanna say.
Well, I guess, I guess we're gonna talk about it. I'm gonna, uh. Part of the, the road, uh, I mean, the permit that we, uh, that you have, that we placed, it was, uh, sent to Ken. Well, he's here right on time. Perfect, but I mean, he can help me with this, Ken, is the fact that. You sent it to, uh, to him, he forwarded to our, uh, state's attorney. And I don't know how far, if you get anything back or, but we, you had a response, come on up and let us tell us what you got.
Yeah, I'm talking about Oliver four, sorry, you walked right into.
And these are two separate, I know, by the way, temporary use, uh, we applied for a, um, temporary use.
For the lay down.
Permit for a lay down yard, separate, and it was part of our CUP included in that application, um. The road use agreement currently is with our attorney, who is going to reach out to, um, your state's attorney.
Cause Todd Ford and he, and then I sent his recommendations on that to these guys.
Yeah, yesterday.
On, but we're looking at two separate permits here, so.
Correct, and the road use agreement, um, is, is separate, yeah.
And this area is west of LOS's old shop on the south side of Highway two hundred, correct?
The lay down area?
Yeah.
East or west?
Is it east or is it west?
It's east of the, uh, power plant.
East of the power plant?
Correct, along our transmission line.
Okay.
On Great River Energy's property. And they're, they're aware, we've had discussions with them, and there's a note right.
There's a letter, yeah.
Closed an application.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I guess this is just a temporary spot for them to put pulls and materials.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's.
Any further discussion? Any none? Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion approved.
Thank you for explaining that.
Twenty-two and twenty, Darnell Bechel abatements?
That's where I'm picturing.
Yep.
So I had, uh, Darnell Bechel came and, um, was talking to me at my office. He has a property, uh, lots six and, six and seven block four, late night edition in Buella. That we determined had a trailer home that was on it that he does not own. He was also being charged, uh, the owner of that trailer home was also paying, uh, mobile tax, so, on a permit. So he was essentially being double taxed for that. Um, so the request would be for twenty twenty, we have twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. For a, uh, abatement for the tax on that mobile home, which came out to be ninety-eight hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, insured full value, so we would ask that that be adjusted and a refund of the taxes for that. We return to him, uh, we do still have a permit for that mobile home, so, taking place.
And this was approved by the city?
It was approved by the city on April second. They both were.
Okay. You wanna do them separate, Jean, or?
Uh, the Scott Bookman and Darrell, or which ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, look, I only ask about the Darnell, um. Let's just do the Darnell Bechel one first, way I almost said that wrong.
Okay, I will move to approve the, um, abatement for Darrell Bechel, which includes both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, it's Liza.
Any further discussion? Any none? Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
I'll vote aye.
Gina, vote aye. Motion passed. Scott Bookman?
Um, this gentleman as well came and talked to me about lots ten and eleven, block four, block, block four, late night edition in Buella. He had moved a, in one church to his property at least five years ago. I'm not exactly sure when it was.
It's been quite a while.
Um, and it was not properly, uh. The value of that was not properly reflected in there. I don't believe it's been gutted completely. There are no remaining walls or anything. So we made some adjustments to the value of that property for twenty twenty-four, and considering that he's had that, you know, there for quite a while. Um, I would ask that we also adjust that for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, so these are submitted by myself. Um, expecting the value of that property with the land and everything to be sixty-five thousand dollars. I ask that we adjust it to sixty-four thousand thirty dollars, um, and re- refund and abate, um, the property taxes for that property. For twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Was this brought to City Buella?
It was brought to City Council, and that one, uh, was also approved on April second.
What's your, the abatement amount?
Correct, the abatement amount would be fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And your, uh, tax equalization you guys would have had in Monday?
We had that on Monday.
And then these would be reflected in that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Do I have the motion to approve the Scott Bookman abatement for lots ten and eleven? I don't wanna get more detailed than that, cause I'll mess it up.
I'll move to approve the abatement for Scott Bookman for the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Any none? Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you. Uh-oh. Reggie, come.
So it's all, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
I mean, appreciate it, but yeah, I mean, at least then we know where this, this lies.
Yeah, yeah, just we were talking about that twenty-four acres and it was just, yeah, we were kind of around.
Okay.
Dave, thank you. We just wanted to make sure he owned it.
Yeah.
Okay. We still got Darren to come back up.
Well, let's, okay, let's listen, listen to Darren here on his.
Mr. Chairman.
Then we'll take a break.
I don't wanna be under your guidance. Is there a time constraint here? My little update will take five minutes, but I, there is one issue that I need to bring up, and it may take a few minutes to go through. So if we're time constrained, I'll be happy to.
Do we have to do the annual bid approval at ten?
I'm, I'm good with that.
We'll have to, no, that's the approval. We already closed the bid on it.
We already, yeah.
Okay.
So he's just presenting it, so there's not a time constraint in that.
Okay, we'll give it a shot. Commissioners, I'm gonna just take maybe five minutes to give you an update. I'm gonna try to do this maybe twice a year and just bring a map. Generally speaking, for Cato's plans for twenty twenty-four, um, I know you probably can't see from there. Blocked out of mine is our mining permit. It's covered by actually five different permits, but our three mining areas, east mineria. Mineria three, or the west mineria, and then the south mineria, there are no big changes in twenty twenty-four. I, I hold up yours just for a moment. The main reason for this map, the colors, pink is what we plan on stripping or disturbing in twenty twenty-two. Green is twenty twenty-five, and blue is twenty twenty-six. All three miners have our normal mine progression with a small exception down here. This doesn't, um, affect any permit or area outside the permit. But we have a pretty big area to strip this year, and it actually pressed to heal what changes the water shed. So what I'm saying there is there's two areas this year, the drains are gonna be stripped. And a pond construction, sedimentation pond is gonna be constructed down here during the year twenty twenty-four. Which will catch all the runoff from our affected area for twenty twenty-four. Point is, following all of, uh, OSHA, MSHA, PSC, and any other initials you can think of. regulations, nothing is happening outside of the plans for twenty twenty-four. Here's one issue that I'm gonna bring up here. Um, County Road twenty-eight, which I would say that you guys are mostly familiar with. Here's the pavement of Buella Road heading north. County Road twenty-eight, right here, has been requested to be closed since two thousand and five. I have that resolution there, copy of the agreement that's attached to it. Um, what I, there's language in that resolution and agreement. That simply states the county and Cato contemplate that this road will be ready to be reopened to public traffic in twenty twenty.
In twenty years now.
Though, yeah, the language is in there. So I, going through a few of our legal channels, I brought along. It's basically in a, uh, addition to that agreement, which simply states. Mining in this vicinity is not complete yet, so we do not, they're not ready to reopen the closed road. The reason that was all in place is because Cato paid for the alternate road to be constructed, which goes by the Baysons Farm. I'm just, I'm guessing you're all somewhat familiar with this. The reason I'm bringing this all up is the language in that agreement from two thousand and five. States that this piece of closed road should be open to public channel in twenty twenty-four. It is not ready to be reopened. The road is reconstructed right to here, but until this area is reclaimed. Our mining is actually progressing well self, but until this is reclaimed, and there's a few sedimentation ponds in here. Until that is all done away with, this road will not be open to public travel simply because it still goes to nowhere. So, with that being said, I'm gonna bring this to your attention, and you guys can help me decide on how to act on it today. I made copies. I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually hand them to each of you, and then I'll give you my two cents. If you notice, the title is just amended.
Did your attorneys tell you you could give us your two cents?
If you can see, I did not write this, it is my attorneys.
Thank you.
This is the one we talked about a while ago, right?
January?
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you my explanation on the procedure of this. The original resolution is dated June of two thousand and five for the road closure. We do that almost every year. I did it last year when we have to close a section line road. There's an agreement that is made part of that resolution, which states that we will reconstruct that County Road twenty-eight. And that Cato paid six hundred thousand dollars for that reconstruction. That's all done. The last paragraph of that agreement says, the county and Cato contemplate that this should be opened in the year twenty twenty-four. So that amendment that I just handed you was drawn up by our lawyers. Um, if you take one moment, it simply states, we're not ready to reopen it. This will be, if you, if you would prefer to take action on this today or at a later date. It's simply going to be attached to that agreement, saying we'll open it when we're done mining in that facility, or in that vicinity, so.
And we had looked at some other ones. They didn't have that twenty-year.
Correct.
Verbiage in it. This one did, but some of the other ones we looked at is, didn't have that verbiage.
The main reason that agreement was attached is it had the stipulations for Cato paying for the construction of the alternate road. And, uh. In my opinion, and probably in my lawyer, our lawyer's opinion, the language that says this will be open in twenty twenty-four. Maybe it just shouldn't have been put in there, but here we are to address it. So it is a, it is a fairly wordy amendment to that agreement. But if you were to accept our documentation that the road's not ready to be opened. This will simply be put in our file and yours as an amendment to the agreement attached to the resolution.
Can we, um?
Is that your two cents or?
That is my two cents. Go ahead, Rick.
My, my question is, can we do this on a year-by-year basis until we, rather than just a blanket thing, so we don't?
Understood. Um, I'm gonna just add this, that there are no other resolutions that say this will be opened at a certain date. It was put into this agreement, so this is a, a very specific case that this needs to be addressed. And over the course of the last week in talking to our legal team, they said, can you give them a date? Do you wanna give them a date? The fact is, we have the alternate road in place. We can't give you an exact date of when this is gonna happen, because reclamation's gonna be happening there this year. But there are some topsoil and subsoil piles and ponds in place to the north of the closed road. And we can't guarantee when they're gonna get moved. It's, if, if you wanna do it on a year-to-year basis, absolutely.
That's what I would think would be, that way, you know, it's rather than just.
Yep.
Throw it out in the wind for the next fifteen, twenty years, at least the way you would have, somebody along the line will have a discussion.
Uh, uh, understood, and you know what? This, this does not need to be acted on today. This is my first draft from the legal department. If, if, at your request, I'd be happy to say, um, this amendment will be revisited in twenty twenty-seven. Or twenty twenty-six, so that we have this day in discussion again to see where we are.
That's, that's how I would look at it, just so you could see, rather than.
Yep.
Have a little bit of something in there.
In, in truth, this kind of, uh, over the last three months, I knew that this was on my agenda to address the fact that. This road isn't gonna be opened in twenty twenty-four, but the legal department basically just got back to me a week ago and said, run with this. And I just wanted to present it to you. I think, uh, if you tell me what you would like to see changed in here, I'll address it, and I'll be back in two weeks.
I guess maybe like five, would five years be a? A reasonable number to at least revisit?
In my opinion, absolutely, and if it's not ready to be opened, we'll have an explanation, but at least it's revisited.
Right, and I would like to. Add this to next month's agenda, just because it affects the public, so that they can see it, that we don't act on it today.
Yes.
But yeah, we, we did, when he brought it up in January after me, we were talking with Cindy and Jen in there. We looked at other agreements with Cato, and they didn't have this twenty-year timeline.
I know.
On it, so it, it was a.
But I think, just in all fairness.
Yeah, no, totally agree.
Even though.
But I feel five years is.
I know, uh, it'd be difficult to tell Cato, no, you gotta put the road in by the end of the year.
I'll just add that, I know I'm on the agenda for a mine update. I wanted to get this discussion had, so that we can move forward with a plan.
Yeah, let's, let's add it to next month's, uh, next meeting, which is next month, right?
Right first.
Agenda.
And it.
For final approval. What, and then could you just, could you bring us another set of language that'll put in there like for five years, that'll be revisited?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would, I don't think you need to take a specific action. That can be discarded. I will bring a new document. Or, or if you wanna put in your discussion that we recommend a five-year term to revisit. Then I'll actually have language in here that says this discussion is had in twenty twenty-nine.
I think, uh, a few of the commissioners would like to see that, that it gets added, that we revisit it in five years.
I would add that Cato's in total agreement with that.
Okay.
And you guys, in that twenty years, you changed the way you did that east mineria at least three times.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your input.
The, uh, the fact that this. The, uh, the fact that this language was in that agreement is, it had to be addressed and it's simply due to the fact that we're not ready to open that road yet, so, and here's why.
And just pass it on to your people that we weren't in disagreement, we just want a little bit of bar card.
It won't, it won't, it'll be a small discussion. I told them that this was gonna be our initial discussion, we'd have a plan going forwards. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Before I walk away, any questions about the mine in general? And if you can't think of any today, you can call me anytime.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we'll recess for five minutes.
Oh, y'all game. I can think of a lot of things besides this.
Okay, now the commissioners are back. We'll reconvene. Highway Department, uh...
Morning, Ken.
Morning.
Start with the annual bid approval.
Annual, uh, bid approval, uh, we had that a couple of weeks ago when we opened up bids. The low price for number one, propane.
It is in our pile.
Oh, you got it?
I found, yeah.
You want me to read them or?
It's about, it's almost at the end.
Okay.
It wasn't...
Is it a two-page or a...
One, front and back.
I guess I can just read inside. The public gets it.
Yep.
Um, propane went to, for the low was root oil and gas on center. Uh, number two, diesel fuel and unleaded gas, Newburger out of Beulah, Fitter out of Hazen, and Root out of center. Uh, three, oil and grease was Newburger. Uh, common excavation, Hanson's excavating out of Minut and Bronco Brothers. And five, tires is lignite tire out of Beulah. Culvert's contact on Bismarck, gravel scoring and crushing is Sundry, sand and gravel out of Minut. And then, uh, Mon Care is S and M out of center. And equipment rental, Bronco Brothers, Dickinson, Hanson's excavating out of Minut, Lakeview out of Beulah, Sundry sand and gravel out of Minut, and Coyote Creek Trucking and Tan, uh, which is Tanner Erickson out of Zep.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve those, accepting those bids?
Yeah.
I'll, um, move to approve the acceptance of bids per Ken's recommendation.
Jamie will second.
Any further discussion?
Just for the public's clarification, when we do these things like propane, we take the low bidder. Gasoline, um, diesel, stuff like that, it's kind of spot prices and, you know, depending on we can get the best deal. Um, some of these other ones, it's just like common ex, when we have a couple of them, it's just, if they have the type of equipment we need or the, then they're pre-approved. So that's why there's a little bit difference on how this bidding goes, it's just that some we lock in, some we just have the ability to use and they're pre-approved.
Right.
With that being said, I got a question then, on the tires, and what do we do there? Cause we don't typically like, even like the one today, we typically don't, we do them all there?
Well, we're gonna have to unless they can offer the tire we need and then we can go elsewhere.
Right.
Cause that's who ran in a bid for us.
Right.
Yeah.
If they can't offer that service or whatever, that tire that we're looking for, which I don't know, but they should be able to, but if they can, we have the right to go to another.
Okay, that's just my question.
Just no different than, well, we have another list of that with the equipment. And Sundry would fit us in. Culvert same way, if they don't have a pipe that, you can go to Nord, they couldn't come up with it, you know?
Is there a, for instance, on tires, is there a government price?
There is.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yep. And that's what the, I don't know how it's, if they do it every year or six months, but that's what we're giving exactly.
Well, what I'm alluding to is basically no matter what retailer you would go to, there's like a set price for that tire.
Right.
That's my understanding, so...
If it's on that government price, that's special.
Okay, all right. Anyway, any more discussion on the, uh, bids? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jane, aye. Motion passed. Uh, bid chip seal, if I go and order on our list here.
Permission to bid, uh, for chip sealing, uh, for this summer, uh, there is, um, County 26 west of EGC over to County 13, over there that a couple of years ago. That's a four-mile stretch that we should have a chip seal this year. One mile west stretch on County 7, west of Golden Valley, um, south of 200 down to the end of the pavement there. And then County 37, which is about three and a half miles stretched south of Hazen. And then Hazen Bay, which is about, I think it's three and a quarter, north of 1806 up to the Gold Round.
What'd you say, 37 south Hazen?
27.
27, sorry.
Yeah.
I, I heard 37.
I heard 37.
I was gonna say, where's our 37?
27. And then Hazen Bay up north of 1806, to the Gold Round, that's what we take care of.
Are we sitting for funds for all this?
We had, I, I can't remember how much we put, but we did a lot for chip seal projects. I don't remember, I don't have my, you know, here, but I, probably half a million or 400,000. And then the alternate we had talked about during budget season was 27 north. So that was that stuff that they just overlaid last year. And the reason why we did that is sometimes you get a better price if you have more. And we have that, that we can strike that off, cause really that would be a year that we did that. But if we can get it for a good price, we have that option. But for sure, we should get those, uh, 26 west, 7, 27 south, and then Hazen Bay.
Okay.
Just to put it out for bid, right?
Yes. And thinking of having it to where they close, permission to bid, then close at nine o'clock on the 15th, that, uh, second meeting, and then open them at 10 o'clock.
May 15th, you talked about that, right?
Okay, so this would just be bidding those projects, not necessarily awarding them.
Correct.
Right.
Because I wanna, I have no problem getting bids on these, but I also wanna make sure that we have funding available within commercial county to take care of like County Road 7.
I think there's gravel projects that need to be looked at before chip seal projects.
That's what I'm at too. I wanna, I wanna get these gra, um, money for gravel before I wanna do the chip seals, but I know, I get it, the fact that these are expensive items that if they, you know, the longer you wait on them, the more they cost too, but they... Right now, I think we could make another year without the chip seal, but I'm, my opinion.
But go ahead, get some bids on this. We'll see where we're at. So, oh, anyway, we need permission.
I'll move to approve, um, going up for bids on the chip seals with a, um, bed, uh, bid deadline of 9:00 AM, May 15th, and then opening bids at 10:00 AM on the 15th.
I have a second.
This is Liza's second.
Liza's second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Was that aye?
Ayes, yeah.
Rick?
Aye.
Jane will vote aye. Motion passed. So you can go get some bids. Um, Beulah shop heater.
Okay, our wash bay on, it's in the main shop in Beulah. On the east side, there's a wall that divides for the main shop. There is no heat in that side. The heater that I was for, it had given out, has given out. But I had gotten bids from Professional Heating out of Dodge, River City out of Bismarck, and then Legend era out of Hazen there. And they each kinda recommend their own deal for those, cause there's a, there's a garage door between the welding bay and the wash bay. Um, so they're looking at a heater for each deal on that end section. Um, Professional Heating and Cooling has a 125,000 BTU radiant or stainless steel tube heater and then a hanging in the welding bay of 125,000 BTU. Their price is 12,700. And then River City, um, they have two Resner 60,000 BTU, one for each, for the, one for the wash bay, one for the welding bay. But they're both radiant heaters up in the ceiling, or up in, or on the high top of the wall. And they're at 10,586.
And how many BTU were the fir, was the first bidder?
60,000, oh, the first bidder?
125,000.
124.
And this last one is River City.
BTUs, okay.
Who was the professional?
Professional Heating and Cooling.
Thank you.
And then, uh, the next one was River City, and those are two 60,000. So they're half the BTU. Okay, and then Legend, they, uh, on the, in the wash bay, they have a 200,000 BTU, um, infrared heater and then for 8100, and then the welding bay portion, they have an 80,000 BTU at 5,675, which is a total of 13,775.
What are the, uh, fuel sources there? They all gas? They all, okay. So they're all the, they're all the same fuel type?
Correct. Rick and I were talking, Rick had come down there and looked and we both kind of agreed that, um, to have that 125,000 in the wash bay and then have that force there, that panning heater, that 125,000, cause it's a quicker recovery with those, you know, with the hanging heater.
Yeah, but force there versus the radiant heat. Especially when you open, close that door.
I was just gonna say for opening and closing a shop door, 60,000.
Not that it opens off like in the wash bay or whatever, but they're connected. There's a wa, a door between the two. The wash bay is a little bit bigger than the welding bay and 90% of the time that door is continuously open, so... But, but Rick and I agreed that the one with that hanging heater and that 125,000 tube heater in the wash bay would be the way to go.
And this is kind of a unique situation and we got different types of heaters, so we got apples, oranges, and a grapefruit, basically.
Pretty much.
Um, so I think, it's not like you have to take the lowest because they're not identical, um, things, so...
No, when we go from the...
So you can't compare it that way.
When you go from the 60, 60,000 BTU to a 120?
Yeah.
And then up to a 200.
And we're talking a shop, this is not...
So technically, if you add the two together, you'd be at 280, 250, and 120, 60 dollars on that bottom. 60,000.
I'd be inclined to go with the Legend era.
Yeah, I'd go with whatever you guys are recommending that suits your needs.
We were looking at the Professional.
Right, the Professional one has the, the hanging heater.
Yeah.
And that was 12?
12,700.
They were kinda in the middle.
Right, and then, uh, Legend would be the two, the 200,000 and a, and 80,000, both two heaters. They come at 13,775.
That's only a thousand dollars more. Well... Whatever you recommend. All right, you?
Well, that's what I, I already said, I recommend the one with the, the hanging heater at 125 was the one, the Professional, I can't remember what it's named. That's what I, and I'd make a motion to accept that one.
The Pro, Professionals bid of 12,7?
Yep.
That's Rick made that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Now where's, um...
My only thought is Legend for a thousand dollars more is a local company.
That's, I was just gonna ask where...
Uh, Professionals out of Dodge.
Oh.
That's Brad.
Well, that's, um, I guess, um, but they're still...
I mean, I guess what I could do too is I could, I probably should've did that prior, but I mean, I would, I could ask Legend what they would charge for a hanging heater. But can we do that?
Now that it's been read out alone, no.
Cause Legend is not a hanging heater, Legend is a...
The two, the radiance up top.
Up the ones that are up in the ceiling and...
Yes.
And have you had any experience as to which you prefer, or which one gives out the best?
Well, that radiant heat is nice, as far as like, because we had that in the main shop, but then they gave out, the ones that we actually have in the main shop, can't even parts for anymore, so, because they're over thirty years old, but, and we have two hanging ones in there. So eventually, we'll have to try, I'd like to have two heat sources, that radiant, which does heat stuff up, but it takes a little while. As soon as you open up a big door, I mean, it takes a while for it to get back warm again. But that radiant is kinda like a fireplace, you know, I mean, you stand by it, it gets pretty hot, but as soon as you open up a door, it's gonna take it a while to recover, where that forced air one is running until the temperature gets up there, then the radiant should kick in.
Any one of them will work.
Yeah.
It doesn't get in the way in your shop.
Right, right.
Okay. Well, so far, the motion was for the Professional. Any more discussion? Rick, how do you vote?
Did we get a second?
Yeah.
I did Travis.
Okay, I'll vote aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Next, flexible transportation fund.
No, we got change order project.
Oh, shop. That was a shop.
This is one you wanna talk about.
Oh, sure.
I know why you skipped.
I said we should all go back home, nobody listened.
Okay. Since the rest of the commission thinks I need to talk about change order project B R O zero zero two nine contractor explanation letter. We will address that, I guess.
Do we have the letter?
Do we have the letter?
I don't see.
No, I didn't do, but I did talk to Joel Fitzick, and that's the one from Schwartz Construction. I, right after that meeting, I sent out an email to Jody, which is his, um, guy that does the invoice and that. I talked to Joel Monday. And he said he's willing, because the total bill was at six thousand six hundred and forty one. It was that clearing and grubbing of where that wetland deal was. And he said, when he said, when they measured what was there, it was like sixty-one millimeter feet, and that's what they used, was a state steel, which I, that's what he told me. But yet, Jason from the state said that he thought they was overcharging, so that's why where we're at. He said he's willing to go half of that, which would be three thousand three hundred and twenty, because he wants to close this thing up, which...
So do I.
Yeah, and...
So does Charlie and everyone else.
I'm trying to remember, because the district engineer said, no, there's no participation on it, correct?
Right, we have to pay them all in.
And Kevin's checking into that. They had said, Joel said he was gonna have Jody email it to me this morning, then he done invoice, but she never got it to me. But it would be, he said half of that, so it's at three thousand three twenty and sixty cents. And Kevin was gonna find out if that's, we can get that eighty-twenty split on that. So if that's the case, we would have to pay about six hundred and sixty-four dollars for that, if we can get that participation.
I guess if... I'd just see it all in writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And agree that it's the eighty-twenty. All the things, all the checkboxes.
Once Kevin finds that out, then we can, and then I get that deal from Joel, from Schwartz.
So you wanna wait to, until we have actual paperwork, okay?
I should have that invoice, I was saying he was gonna try to get it today, but...
I guess my only thought is that, like, if we do this, then we're not gonna accept any other things from the contractor. Like, if they come back and say another change order, we're not even gonna entertain it. You know, I mean, because the bridge is done, and, I mean...
We're not gonna have change orders for the next millennia. We need this to be done and final and John Shields' bridge, hopefully. This has almost been a thorn. Okay, so next...
Not John, but just the bridge by his place.
Yeah, not John, no. I wish, we should almost call it a different name, because we know, but we know where the, when we use John Shields, we have geographically, we know what we're talking about. But the bridge itself is, we gotta get this thing done. So can we add that to the next agenda? Will you have anything by then?
I should.
Okay, next.
See, that was easier than we thought, right?
Thanks for checking in, Ken.
Project B R O zero zero two nine.
Yes.
To me, I feel like they had a misunderstanding, like the...
Okay.
Whether it was intentional or not, but...
Okay, now, flexible transportation funds?
Ron Hankey, but I think it was, I can't remember his name from the DOT. This is regards, it was a letter they had emailed out, it was my pleasure to inform that you, the project you submitted, the asphalt overing gradient of fifty-one, for fifty, First Avenue Southwest, which is the entrance into that Hazen Airport, a regional airport, was selected by the committee in North Dakota Department of Transportation Director, and will be awarded seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the flexible transportation fund for construction and construction engineering. And then a member of the DOT local government will reach out to me and we'll go from there. And I did find out, it's not, it's not like federally, so we don't, shouldn't have all that red tape.
I'm fed.
It's reimbursed as soon as a project's done. There's a few stipulations upfront to make, you know, because we, it's out for bids once you get, but I mean, as far as that goes, it's, we like those oil money funds, we used to have like twenty-one, thirty, and, can't remember all those, eleven fifty-six, if I remember right, so.
So this is out on...
Which is good, because, you know, we actually allotted eight hundred thousand for this project, so. And it's, it's a grant, we don't pay, I mean, as long as we don't go over that, we get that money back, so. Like Rick and I were talking, and Jean, we got money for gravel and...
We're, well, to clarify, even if the entire project were to cost eight hundred, we're gonna get seven eighty-eight.
Right.
We're not getting eight hundred.
Yes, so it depends on bids coming in, and Charlie said that bids are actually coming in more than what he projected because of the asphalt cost. So hopefully.
But also, that road's in decent shape.
And does this...
It does have a good base.
Yeah.
Does this go down to the airport entrance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, but he, I think he had said that he was gonna bid, you know, there's like, kinda like that twenty-seven, there's alternate two, because we had talked about going all the way down to the end, so there's different scenarios. And I think he's, airport that sells on it to do, get a price on their portion.
Correct.
But we're not paying for that, airport.
No, but the airport wanted to know.
And airport went in for a grant for that as well, too.
Airport wanted to know that if we do anything with that, then we're supposed to coordinate that with the airport, because they wanna do something with their eighth of a mile or quarter mile.
Yep.
So really, nothing to act on, it's just the...
Good news.
And I'm trying to remember, was it the prairie dog money that we were using for that road, or was it a combination of something else?
I thought it was prairie dog.
And nothing else, just...
I thought it was just prairie dog, because our foot lanes were tiny.
Okay, so we're in the process of getting bids on that right now?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright.
I think so.
I believe so.
Okay, anything else on that?
I can talk about the gravel that we... Oh, excuse me, yeah, I gotta list it higher, that's all.
Okay, go for it.
Sandblasts and paint truck, dump truck?
This is one of our end dump, you got pictures, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I guess, um...
Here's a couple, this is...
What's... Did you get bids, or, I know you have money, comes down to money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just on that.
See, it's got, truck itself, we have two...
They have sand here on.
You know, we have two hundred and thirty-four thousand.
So just doing the inside of it?
No. It's about fifty.
You see, it's still a good truck, yeah. The GRs are Dickinson sandblasted, it's fifty-five hundred dollars. And that's sandblasted, and then sprayed on, painted with the correct...
And you have this in your budget?
Yes.
Right?
Yep. And now, do we wanna talk about, should we, then rails are a little bit different, I'm gonna get a price on them, the actual, those are steps. It's a rail that a guy can stand on for safety. Because a drop in sander goes in there, and what happens is, you have to have something, if the chunks get stuck in there, you gotta be, otherwise, you don't wanna have someone fall off there.
No.
Right.
I guess my thought was, if we were gonna paint it, I would paint the whole thing. I wasn't gonna paint just the box.
The box and the rails, not, the cabs are good, it's just that...
I mean, I was talking about the side rail on the side.
And so fifty-five hundred dollar bid to repaint the box.
And blast it, blast it, paint it, yes.
Okay.
And I'll have to get a price on this.
On the rails.
On the rails.
It was over the five thousand, so that's why we're here asking what you guys wanna do.
Well, do I have a motion to approve sandblasts and paint number one twenty-six dump truck?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And the reason why you need to sandblast and paint a dump truck is because you don't want
the rust.
Rust out, right? I just wanna make sure people understand why you would need to, it's not because we want it to look pretty.
We wanna protect the steel.
It's protected.
Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, we can hopefully get four or five hundred thousand.
Right.
White's fine.
Some flames on it, I don't know.
Okay, any other discussion on this dump truck repainting project? Hearing?
I did.
Rick and Travis. Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, gravel.
Okay, discussion was, I called, in all our conversations, we come up, well, we know on the roads and the situations we have. But, I called Randy Byram. It's about, I mean, we do have some gravel on County Road, over on thirty, Highway thirty-one. It's probably not the best quality, we have a pretty good pile that Byram owns up there. I asked him how much is up there. He said about forty thousand, he would do some more this fall, but that's what's there for this year, forty thousand ton. I'm in the opinion that we need to gravel quite a few of our roads. I would like to spend, I, my, within the conversations I had with Ken, I would like to go with about five hundred thousand dollars, buy about five hundred thousand dollars worth of gravel. I did get a quote from Randy on the way over here. We were at, he's at sixteen dollars a ton. And the reason being is that the demand, there's, there's no gravel in the country and everybody wants it. He would give us, I asked him if we could speak for thirty thousand, is one I asked him, but I was at fourteen, so I don't know where. That came up to four hundred and fifty thousand, so I don't know what, I don't know what sixteen's gonna be.
You go five hundred thousand, and sixteen is thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-fourty.
So I mean... And that's delivered?
No.
No, that would be a spot, I wish it was loaded. He'll load it, but we get it delivered.
Oh, okay, so we'll use our trucks, but that's, okay.
And now we have...
And we got the belly dumps?
Yeah.
Yep, and then, update on that, the brakes are completely gone through on both, and we have to set up the brakes on the one, so that was right around a thousand dollars, but if we were taking it in, it'd been two...
Around it, that's what I was gonna ask, if we could just buy some and have it on hand. But, how long can we leave it sitting on this property?
Well, that's something we'd have to work on something with Randy, I mean, I think it's something that should probably be taught to, because if, say, if we, if a guy would prepay for it, and, you know, so we get our portion.
I understand.
Guaranteed it.
He, he more than likely doesn't want us to have it laying on his property for the next twenty years, but
but I think we can...
Couple of years.
We'll use, we'll have thirty thousand this year, we'll have that used up.
Okay. Well, I just, we need to clarify that with him, that we can leave it...
I would like it, like, in writing, but I did ask him in, in our conversations, that was, there was not a problem with that, but I, you know, if you want it writing, that's what we need to get, some type of contract.
Start paying a storage fee or something for it.
Yeah, I'd like to see a actual quote, contract type thing, before we approve it, but...
Just to cover everything.
Okay.
So we should probably put that on the next agenda?
Yeah.
You could get a more stuff.
We'll get a paper, the paperwork in place for it.
Yep.
Gravel bids, or gravel, however you wanna word it.
So we piled, we got the county that's...
Free buying gravel.
And I guess we're still doing, on that subject, we are doing exploration on that, too. So I mean, we've got a couple of places, one, we do know where there is some, whether the landowner's gonna part with it. Another one is, we did get permission from another landowner to go, we've got a couple of places to go search.
Five places to look.
Yeah. So we actually, we're actively looking also.
Whether it's any good or not, that's the...
That's, how much over there, and how much, you know.
And how much.
But that's something we can budget for.
Right. And we have, we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand budgeted for gravel, you know.
Right.
And then we got so much for royalties, too, so that's...
But I'm talking in twenty-five, and, you know, forward.
That's because, even like, if we would find, let's say, for instance, one of these pans out, it's gonna be a good pit. That's the reason why I would like to speak for this gravel, is because like, the Main Street project in Beulah's looking for it, other Marathon Oil's looking for it, there's just, multiple counties are looking for it. The problem that I see is that, even if we, say we do find a good pit or whatever, to get Sundry's or Fisher, to get on their schedule and get it, we might get it done next year, we might not even get it done next year. So I mean, leave time to get to it, so we need something in between.
Right, yeah, we can't wait.
Right, and it's cheaper to mine it here than to truck it out. Right, because then you're paying that plus trucking.
I mean, you can go over to Turner Lake and pick it up, and it's, it's six dollars a ton to buy it, eighteen dollars a ton to haul it.
Yep, so if you can get something put together and get that to us, I would really appreciate it.
If we can secure some gravel, not just find it, but secure it.
Well, that's why, that's why I would like to, that's why I asked him if we could speak for thirty thousand, he had forty on the pile, but I said I wanna get something in place that we have it, so that it's ours, and that we're not on the outside looking in. Especially, this is as close as we're gonna get it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for the highway department?
You had bridge, too.
John Shield Bridge, well, I thought we discussed that.
That was done?
That was the exploration letter, yeah, before we drove it down.
I didn't know if it was...
You had to bring it up again, didn't you?
Yeah, that was me, I'm sorry.
Okay, anything else for the highway department?
Did we miss anything? You know, just a little quick, because I know he needs to get in there, but just to comparison, Rick and I were looking at all the numbers, which you knew was there, too, but one thousand seven hundred and fifty ton will do a mile of a twenty-four foot road top with a three inch lift of ground.
And that comes out to about seventy loads.
Right. With the...
We did do, we did do a quick comparison.
No.
We did a quick comparison with the contractor coming in and reshaping the road, the quote, and he was gonna haul the gravel on it, and it was a hundred and fifty-three thousand and change for per mile. So I mean, we are way under...
It was like half the cost, right?
Yeah, less than half.
So, we're trying.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Mr. Schwab. Made you wait a while.
I just wanted to come down and let you guys know where we're at with this Paul Martin monument. We wanna put up, I got some pictures here, but, but, um, a monument that we selected and, um, Mindy was in, helping select this one. This one's cheap on it.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Ken.
Do you need one? Okay. You've got it.
This is the monument we've selected gold with and stuff, and I just wanted to update you guys on what we wanna do and where we wanna put it. We think the best spot would be right out here by the Vietnam Veterans Wall, but have it on the opposite side, so they'd be kinda facing each other, so, you know, one doesn't take away from the other. And it's, like, put it in a place where it's out of the way for maintenance and, uh, stuff like that. It'll be on a, a solid base. Joe or most that don't use cement, so they don't last. So it's, it's on a granite one, which would be the bottom side of that picture, that eight inch, uh, grave is eight inches thick, it was said on there. The monument itself is five feet tall and, uh, two feet, or, uh, where am I here? I think it's two feet wide, five feet tall, and Paul's picture in there would be, uh, uh, five inches high. And then, uh, eliminated in there. This monument here is, uh, it's guaranteed for life, even against vandalism, so they, the company has said it, uh, do any maintenance that needs on it, anything like that for life. So, uh, that's one of the reasons we went with that one. Uh, we also have an option, which we'd, I'd like to, uh, speak to you guys about is, uh, putting a bench by it. West Dakota Lumber offered to donate a bench. It's made out of cedar, which we're still not sure, cause that will need some maintenance eventually. Who's gonna, you know, restain it or whatever, or we had an option of going with some metal ones, but they're quite a bit more expensive. You know, just so we'd see what, uh, what our, how our fundraising goes with that. And, uh, with the fundraising, we've got a, a account set up at Union State Bank, it's under the Knights Columbus, we went with them cause we needed, uh, a tax.
Not-for-profit, yeah.
Non-profit tax deal, so it's the Knights Columbus Paul Martin Memorial Fund that's listed on there. And then, uh, we also have, I don't know if any of you have seen that car hood picture. Keith Orth from Riverdale, uh, bought one at Demandan, uh, benefit, they did, uh, down at Bismarck and it's regular sized car hood, but, uh.
It's got a full decal on it and I shouldn't, I'm like.
This, uh, car hood is, uh.
It's blue and black and white.
Car hood is something, uh, I'm not in a big hurry to get to. Anyway, it has too many things on it, yeah. Being electronics will be a lot. So anyway, we had, it's a beautiful car hood, but, uh, talking with Terry, he figured the best place for that would be inside, but, you know, eventually somebody's gonna walk past it and scratch it or something just for display. So we'd like to build a display case to put it in, so it's behind glass. And talking with Terry, I think one of the best places is right where you come in, the doors, you know, where you come through the metal detector and stuff, and then I can go over to the sheriff's side, that's a nice big wall there, and it'd be a lot of traffic, cause it's right by the main entrance, more people would see with this. We'll bring up later, I'm mainly concerned about getting this, uh, monument, uh, get that ordered and get that set, the company will come and do all the work, the step and all of that. So, would like to, uh, see if we can get approval from you guys to put it, or see what you think of putting it over here and that area, unless you think there's, uh, some other place you'd sooner see them.
I hadn't had a chance to talk to Jim, cause it, he, he's been out for a little bit, so I, that was on the agenda today to try and talk to him, just make sure where you're talking, there's no mechanical reasons to not have it there.
Right.
So what's, what's the cost of the, uh?
Uh, this one is gonna run around ten thousand, um, what was it, ten thousand two hundred?
Two hundred or.
Forty-eight or something.
It was like ten thousand three hundred was wrong to them.
Yeah.
So how far have you got with fundraising?
Uh, we're, right, I, uh, when I checked yesterday, I think we had twenty-two hundred, uh, at around ballpark figure there. And Mindy, or Marianne, excuse me, Marianne Schmidt was just gonna send out all of the notices to all of the, put it in paper, and all of the businesses and stuff to let her know we got this fund, uh, up and going, so to see if we can start getting, uh, money coming in for that.
I visited and we did an interview, and so this week's paper, we, I'm, about that, that one as well, it's from the general.
I'm gonna have, ask Dawn, she'll help me, and Travis will help me on this question too, is like, for something like this that we had that, we did the parks and loo, money out of that coal conversion? This is not, you know, it wouldn't be taxing, uh, using taxpayers' dollars at that point, would that be something we could work on, take, take some money out of that account to apply to this?
I don't see why not.
I'm just asking the question, is all I'm, right now, I don't know.
I don't know. So it is for parks. I'll strip that, I mean, I guess it's probably up to you guys, who have the separate criteria in drawing out of that eventually, but.
I'm just looking at, I mean, I would, I would like to put something towards this, but I don't, where do we get it from? That's my question.
Well, if you can, you can, I understand, the, the colony cannot donate towards projects.
They have to come in and ask for it, right?
Uh, they can't necessarily. Even then, we can't.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, if you, if you're gonna say we wanna donate towards this, you're gonna miss.
That doesn't work, okay, so.
Yeah, cause the colony can't actually donate towards stuff like that, is my understanding. Now, if somebody comes in and asks for it on the park and loo, then if it comes to your management issue, I would assume that's considered a park in Hobbs Street, you are.
If it fall under the, right, if it fall under, under that criteria, correct.
Right, and, and the one we approved, the last meeting, is in the Bula Parks District area, so it falls under a park designation.
Is the Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial Park out here? I don't know how that works, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, and I mean, it's a good question to look into.
I don't know what we.
Well, that's what I mean, I gotta have to have these questions answered before you make any decisions or, or work.
Okay, but for now, you were asking for permission about placement of this.
Right.
Not, not funds, you weren't asking for funds, okay.
See if we can, you know, if you guys will pay, putting it in that location, uh, like I say, we'll have to check, make sure there's some sprinkler lines or anything like that in the way.
If you wanna make a motion, I'll make a motion to put it there as you're, uh, pending approval from Jim.
I'll second. Jamie?
Yep.
I will, talk, Jack, I'll talk to him and I can get back to everybody.
That's good.
So, pending, um,
Maintenance.
Until we vote on it here, but, uh, the motion is that you can place it out there pending, um, I guess, real basically pending Jim's approval.
Right.
So to speak.
So that there's no conflicts with irrigation or, right, you know.
Any issues that we have with.
I'll also check with the VA office, just to make sure that that monument out there is not specific. Specific to just the veterans or something, I don't wanna step on, even though Paul is a veteran. Paul is a veteran, but.
He's a veteran too, yeah.
The county.
I'm getting kind of a consensus here from the commission, they're not opposed to you placing it there, but there's some conditions, we're gonna check out, we haven't voted on it yet, so.
Yeah, and, uh, one thing too, I'd like to check with, you know, when you're checking with him, whoever does the grounds work, what would be best around the base, so they don't have to get right up to it, the, uh, you know, the riding horse or anything like that, if they want, you know, a rock border like they have, uh, around other stuff or whatever, would, uh, do anything to work with that too, just whatever works the best.
All right, Rick, how do you vote?
I would aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. There, now we can say yes. Until, uh, I'm meeting with them other entities and making sure everything's kosher, you, you got the commission's permission to go, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate your time. Hold on for a picture here.
Anything else?
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Okay. Parks and Loos Fund Request, Dan Gurkey.
She's on her way, okay.
Art Sheriff's Fees, forty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, twenty-nine cents.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Guys, do it quicker than I can write your initials. All right. Liza made the motion, Rick seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Duplicate warrant, uh, for twenty dollars from Mercer County Abstract.
I'll motion to.
I'll second.
Jamie?
Jamie and then Liza.
Liza.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I can't move right that fast.
Duplicate warrant number five, four, seven, eight, eight, for twenty dollars, is Jamie and then me.
Tell me when you're caught up.
Okay.
I'm waiting on Gwen.
Okay, go.
All right, any discussion? Jamie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
Gwen, you need to be a court recorder. Jean, Jean Wolf.
Jean. Dawn, needs your attention.
What's that?
So don't run away.
There we go.
There. Nine-one-one addressing.
We got a kid.
That is in your packet.
Yep, it says nine-one-one MOU on the top.
Ken, come on up. Where is it?
I don't see it here.
Right?
BYOB?
Wait, is it in there?
Could be.
Is it this way?
Right there, isn't that, was it, nope. I'm looking for my.
It's a one pager, but it's got a front and a back.
Maybe it's down here.
Yes, I came out of this thing. Out of this here.
This is the mine.
This yours?
Yeah.
I have one now.
Shannon's temperature.
How about everybody else?
Everybody but me, I suppose. I know what it's about, but.
Not that one, Rick.
Memorandum of Understanding.
Nope, not that one.
Application, and resource update. Well, I'm glad about the only one that gets lost in this paperwork.
Here it is.
Awesome.
All right.
There, so I can put this.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Got questions?
Oh.
Well, it started with, uh, Terry proposed, uh, the nine-one-one, uh, we'd like to hire.
No, 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 no.
Am I the wrong one?
Yeah.
Okay. Start over, then get somebody else.
This is the memorandum of understanding between Mercer County and the Mandan.
And that's just for the portion of northwest quarter up there, the portion that we have on tribal lands.
This is already being done, this is not new.
Renewing it.
Yeah, right.
This is just a, um, agreement between MHA.
And also we can do mapping up there and stuff, sweet.
Okay.
I'll move to approve accepting this MOU for our agreement with MHA Nation.
I'll second.
Liza? This is. You have no problem with it? Okay. I don't even know how to ask a question here.
How long is this good for? Or is there indefinite, on a year?
Uh-huh. Almost all MOUs are yearly.
Okay, I, I just didn't see, uh, date on here, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this memorandum of understanding with MHA? Hearing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye.
No, there is one. Are you gonna stick around for the next one or not?
Do I have to?
No.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, EM, or?
Dan is here.
Oh.
We've been behind all day, I mean. We've tried to start over a few times.
I messed up a couple of things today.
All right, now we're back to, back up here to Parks and Loos Fund Request.
Yes, um, actually, I, I have two different things I didn't know exactly how to present both of them, but, uh, the Parks and Loos, uh, the Bula Chamber, or the Bula Chamber, sorry, it didn't have, Bula Lions Club, uh, has put, uh, sick, or, has completed a park, it's done, it is usable, um, I've stopped down, it's getting used quite frequently. It is the only one, my, my understanding in Mercer County that is for preschool, so it is designed just for the little wills. Uh, it's right next to the Lions Club Shelter, right across from the bathrooms at Riverside Park. What we did is we put in a brand new park, there is a little bit of dirt, just for diggers, the rest of it's turf, which made our project a quarter sixty-seven thousand dollars. We were very gracious with some businesses that had given, uh, given us donations. Lions Club has been doing fundraising, we did the night at the races, the last emotion derby that we conducted last summer is also being used to, to fund that. We're replacing the grills in that park area, putting up a sign, uh, and so, because there's funding, we're gonna see if you would be interested in donating towards that project, um, and be included in the sign for that project, and, uh, at this point, I just got word as I was on my way over here that we potentially could have some other additional foundation money coming in, and so we told you we're placing another park that's in the, it's country called States area. I actually drove up there in circa nineteen, it's all metal and very dangerous, um, so that would be if we have any overflow, at this point, we do not. But I did get, um, checks that were called that potentially we have a couple of foundations, two Senex, that are donations that potentially could be coming in, but I don't have a, a dollar figure for that. So that's what I wanted to present, um, as far as in parks. Funding is that project, this is our second park that we've done, the first one is the, the Bula Lions Park, that is by our sho, uh, shelter and shed, right by the car wash. And that particular park was around forty, fifty thousand dollars as well, so, um, as today, we've committed hundreds of thousands of dollars at this point, uh, to building that, and I don't think will be done, simply because funding has to come from somewhere to make things a better. So that's what I wanted to present on the first one. Is there any questions you guys have?
I don't think we could technically do a donation, you'd have to do a request for a certain amount of monies, and then we could discuss.
I actually, I think gave that to Carmen, um, but she did say there was a formal.
No, we're working on a formal process, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, when, when I had talked to her the first time, we were about five thousand dollars short. Um, I don't know if she got, if she included that to you guys, that's what I did send.
Well, I, I'd like to see a request for a specific, like a specific park or specific, not just, uh, we want money to do parks.
For that park right there.
Okay.
Um, that's the one that we committed sixty thousand dollars for, and we've been working on, that was the park that we needed funding to finish. Like I said, I wanted to be very honest with you on the way over here, that I was told that we potentially have funding coming through, um, from, I, I believe it's like Land O' Lakes. It's, Senex did all the work, but there's four entities associated with the Bula Senex that potentially could have money coming through. So, if you wish to not do anything at this point, don't wait till we find out for sure, exactly where we're at, and then I can come back and present for that other park. That will be shifting funds towards, I can certainly do that as well, but like I said, whenever we requested this two months ago.
Yeah, I apologize for the delay in that alone, because it, it should have been taken, like, on a month at, at least ago of the agenda, so.
And part of this, the question that just came up prior to this was like, more clarification, we can't donate to somebody, we need a request, so. That was just with the Paul Martin thing, we were looking at, what we could do or whatever, but that's something we can't do, so. We have to, I mean, it's, makes it more complicated for you and more time again, but we need a, a formal request, and so.
So how do you want a formal request?
I mean, a set, you're saying set dollar amount.
Yeah, and like I said, the first time I did it was five thousand, but I hate to tell you five thousand, because I have this one that potentially be coming. because I hope this one that potentially be coming in.
I'm sorry that that didn't get to us.
So I'd be happy to come back.
Yeah, that would be to our benefit, I mean, when you've got things in order and then come back and give us a request.
Like set dollar amount.
Right, you can put in a request for, like a specific dollar amount, doesn't say that that's what you're gonna get, but. And then this, a specific project, not just for our parks.
Well, it was, like I said, it was a specific one, it was for that park that you have in front of you, that's that location.
It's this one right here.
I just wanted to be very open and honest with you that potentially we could have more coming in, so we're expanding and going to different locations. And I don't think it's right for people to donate towards a park and not use it towards a park, so that's what we're gonna do. And then, did she put me on for the four H two?
It just says Parks and Lou Fund Request.
Okay.
Go ahead, what's your next? Is this a request or a?
It is a request.
Maybe it has nothing to do with parks, I know it can't come from that, and I don't know if you have funding available to use it any other way.
Travis is very close to this subject. The four H, what do we call it, council?
Council, yeah.
The Mercer County Four H Council has been working very diligently, and I will tell you, I've been personally raising money for over ten, twelve years towards fixing our Mackenzie Building. That's it, at the fairgrounds. We've, it's an older building, screws have worked themselves out, so there's holes, whether it gets in. We've been fundraising on multiple different venues, we've done hamburgers, we did the food at the Tachia Fair that we used to have in town. We've been trying to hoard money to get, because these are bigger expenditures. My understanding is that we've been told that we can't keep holding that money, we currently have twenty thousand plus, and we are not allowed to keep that on our books, we have to spend it and get it off of our books and get the project done. We just physically can't keep that money anymore, and that's coming from N D S two extension system. I am actively asking and have put letters out to different organizations, asking for funding, asking for donations. Travis is gonna get to hear me speak next week, because I have a fundraising idea that I think we can pull in by a few dollars as well. But we are under the time constraint that we have to have that money gone and spent this year. And we've, I know Mercer, the Fair Board has put in some of the electrical type things, we spent money for the lighting and the new electrical inside. The next item of business is to spray foam the inside of the building, so that we can have it shored up and sealed. Perfect world is if we have enough money to paint the outside of it and to replace all the screws as well, but we kinda have to do it step by step. So at this point, the bill that proforms said that they would still honor our first quote that they did way back when, and they're very gracious, because I know prices have gone up. We are in need of twenty thousand dollars, again, I'm not asking for you guys to fund that, but anything you could potentially help us with would be fabulous. That is the dollar figure we're short right this minute. Is there any way that you can help me?
Not that I know of.
Not without thinking and researching on what we can and can't do.
We're back to the same, same thing that was just said a little bit ago, we can't donate public fi, or monies as a county. Maybe you can, I don't know how that would work with the Fair Board, but you could probably work with the Fair Board and or raise money, but we can't make donations.
Yeah.
Am I wrong? I don't think I was wrong with that. I think, I think I worded that right, we as a, as a county commission can't make donations.
Dawn, any?
And I would say, it's because, like you say, it's public money that other people have raised through taxes.
I've always been.
That would be mine, but I would think it would be a lot behind that.
Yeah, I've always been told we can't make a donation. But, yep, that would have to be. Because that would come along with, where would we take it out of? See, no one fun, well.
The question we had here about ten minutes ago, where would we go with it?
Yeah, it's, it's, all, all our funds are for specific items, so we don't have a donation fund. There's no donation fund.
Is there a use fund, I mean, that's what, it's, it's a community for the whole county, that's why just getting Beulah money or just getting anything, that doesn't make sense, it's a county thing.
We have very few funds that are, and even then, those are for specific items, I don't even know if that's. They have a specific use, there are some funds that there's monies in, but they can only be spent for that item. So. Other than that.
Let me do some research on it.
Okay. So as of right now.
I don't think anybody disagrees that that building needs some P L C.
Well, it'll get done regardless, I will make sure it gets done, I'm sure. I don't work until the last day it gets done, but.
Just for your information too, is that when we did the power on that side, so you know about it, but we had, we, when we had enough amperage, what they put that C T can and stuff in there, that there's enough over to move across that road to put heat and air conditioning in there, so that whatever.
We can't even talk about that expensive stuff.
I just want you to know it's available.
Yeah, no, I was aware of that, yeah, because there's enough there, I appreciate that.
Because when we did that, it was like, that may happen, so we wanted to be, you know, have it ready if it did happen, so.
Perfect and wonderful if it could, but I just gotta get the kit shored up at this point.
There's a lot of things we can possibly assist with, but when it comes to money, our hands are pretty well tied.
Spray foam the inside of buildings.
It's, uh, we gotta be very careful there, and I would definitely ask for a legal opinion before I would.
Back to your Parks and Lou, I think, just if, if, once you find out, come back with a specific amount requested, and then it can be discussed.
This thought just occurred to me.
Yeah, I'm just not against, I don't even know where, where we would take it out of, because it's.
This thought just occurred to me, Mercer County Economic Development would be an entity that funds could come from, kinda similar to a J D A at the city level, but like, like we said earlier, I gotta look into it.
Yeah, but then again, we don't really, we do, but we don't budget any money, we could, we budget a specific amount.
We allocate.
We'd have room to allocate if there's a request. But we'd have to find out.
Anyway.
Specific.
We're gonna look into it.
We will be digging into it, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Deanne.
Thanks, Deanne.
Okay, E M position. Do I have?
Jamie, you need a break?
I'm gonna run out real quick, so.
If Jamie needs a quick recess.
Pardon?
Jamie would like a quick recess.
Quick recess.
Okay. We'll have a.
If not, Jamie's just gonna go out and Jamie's gonna come back.
We'll have a five-minute recess if so requested.
Want you guys to take a recess, show you the picture of that wood, and then get out of your hair, for you guys that still have some.
See, under pressure.
Yeah, you're not bothering, you're not bothering me. Probably easier to pass my phone around.
There you go. How's that?
It's a picture of Eagle that's painted on this car hood. And, uh, there we go. And then it's got Deputy Paul Martin on the bottom, end of watch, and stuff. It's really beautifully painted and done up real nice. That's why talking with Terry is, that almost has to be inside, you may just sit outside, you know, somebody key the damn thing here, self walking past that, but anyway, I just wanted to show you.
He lost a lot longer too.
Or it'd be hailstorm even.
I said he would last a lot longer and so.
Oh, yeah, it would have lost a lot longer. Inside, that's why we thought.
So you score it up right here. She ain't gonna make it.
Okay, thanks for your guys' time.
Thank you, Jack. That'd be a nightmare, huh, Dawn?
Rules.
Oh, I meant it for snowboarding.
Oh, definitely, that would be very pleased and pretty much needed.
Okay, can we reconvene?
Yes, we can.
Okay, we'll reconvene.
All right, so E M, we have two, currently have two applicants for the position. And I have another option that has come our way that is a potential for this as well. So what I was thinking might be our best way to go on this, and I did talk to Daryl about this from Oliver County, is that we do interviews for those two applicants that are next, as a special meeting during our next meeting time, May first. And then also have McLean County's E M come over and talk with us about the potential of putting Oliver, McLean, and Mercer together and what that might look like. So we'd have a few options to decide then, after that.
The McLean County E M did reach out to me a few weeks ago, and I took it to Liza. The nice part about the three counties is they have, as far as infrastructure, have similar entities within them. Coal mines, power plants, that kinda stuff. Both have bodies of water, or all three have bodies of water as far as that type of stuff, so.
They have a lot in common.
Yes, and I never want Oliver County to feel for cotton.
I'd say Oliver County had concerns about this, and that's why Daryl would want to be present to, for our discussion on this, and I did talk to her this morning as well, and there are some different nuances that would be different, for instance, like she doesn't have a separate L E P C meeting, she presents that to the commission, and those are considered her L E P Cs. So there might be a few different nuances with that, so that's why I had talked to her about potentially coming over and talking about those differences as well.
And wasn't opposed to in-person L E P C meetings when I talked to her, because that's, but.
Yeah, and she was a little bit.
She just does do things differently.
Right, yeah, yeah, so I think it would be good to have her input for us to be able to make an informed decision. And then we would have those two interviews as well, so then we could know.
Kind of best possible, what everybody thinks of the whole situation.
For all involved.
Right, and we already have a library, joint library board with McLean, so it's not like, it's not a county we don't do stuff with already.
Yeah, and she said she had talked to the auditor and a commissioner over there, and they were not opposed to it either at that time. But I just think it'd be best if we could all get together and all work on this, if that might be a potential, because then we would definitely have to figure out financially how that would look as well.
And would that, I mean, we gotta talk about it, but would that actually create, like, two positions if it was three counties, or would it still fall under one individual?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So, does McLean has an E M currently?
Yeah, so we would contribute to that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, could that E M be responsible for three full counties?
Yes.
Okay.
With assistant, like, she said, obviously, I don't know what Western Mercer County looks like, but I can, I can go there and I can find out. She's like, obviously, I don't know the fire chief in Hazen, but I can meet them, like, those kinda things, she's just not as familiar, but not unwilling to.
And, and as I've said, you know, like Oliver is pretty tentative about this, because they're very nervous about they're gonna be the one that's gonna be left out.
They just don't wanna be forgotten.
And she recognizes that, and so that she doesn't want anybody to feel left out, and then she also doesn't wanna take a job away from somebody who may have applied for it as well too. So I just wanna propose it as a potential option.
And with McLean County, this would be, we would contract.
Right.
Correct.
That, and that would be have to be something that we'd have to figure out too. So it would be a whole host of different things that we would have to look at. But I think it would be good for us to do the two interviews, see what we have there, see what the potential is with going in with McLean County, and then make a decision once we have all that information together.
You know, I think when, in my point of view, is like what you had mentioned about having this young lady or whatever come over and and visit, because on my way over here, I was talking with Daryl, and he was definitely opposed to it.
Right.
So if she sat down and could answer his questions and be more comfortable with it, they might look at it a different way.
Or if one of these two interviewees seem to be a very good fit, and it'd be great, I think we have that option too.
Well, and I, I know I had told Liza, like, I wanted to kinda know what Oliver County's concerns or hesitancy about any of the situations were, because was there, has there been things over the past however long that they weren't getting that they felt they should? I just wanted to know what they felt.
So do we wanna do this during a normal Mercer County Commission meeting, have, um, McLean County come over here, have Daryl from Oliver County up here and address us at a regular meeting and ask these questions?
Or just do, if they're doing a special meeting, do a special day?
Well, we have to do a special meeting for the interviews.
Right, but it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Well, I would like, if you're gonna do a special meeting, that's the time you should look at all three of these options, I think.
Right, I think it should be all done as one time. I just didn't know everybody's availability, and usually it's just best to do it at a day when we already have it set aside.
That too.
Was my thought when I was.
Yeah, because it'd have, beans we, we would have a meeting, it's a public meeting anyway, so probably just put it on the agenda as, towards the end of the meeting when we're all kind of already.
Add it as a special meeting after.
Well, and, and that was, here's my thought on that too, is do we have the interviews right away as a special meeting, so that way we have the interviews done, so we can be thinking about that?
Well, we definitely do the interviews first.
Right.
Yes.
And then have McLean County at like, I think we have Farmington petition at eleven, right? So have her, I don't know how long that would take. Might take a while, right?
What are you looking at?
Conversations got long last time, but the.
Yeah, oh, because I was thinking, or do we have her at, like, do we have something else specifically set up at different times? The only thing I see is here is this, usually we have the road department at ten.
Bit openings at ten.
Bit openings at ten, okay, yeah, so I didn't know if we should do like ten thirty for her to come over? So then we still have a little bit of time to process stuff, and then at the very end of our meeting?
At, at like eleven thirty, do our special meeting of interviews?
Well, I was thinking the interviews would be first.
Oh, do interviews first.
So that we would have those done, then we'd have her come and talk at like ten thirty. And then revisit it again after this Farmington petition.
I'm not sure where we're gonna fit that in.
We should, I think that's gonna destroy. We should have the interviews after the meeting, is my thought.
Okay, so you think everything at the end?
Just because we have ten o'clock bit openings for the road department. What is the, yeah, what is the agenda? Well, we're gonna have, we have that, Tom coming back, which I'm guessing will be at nine thirty, because that falls under Jim's portfolio stuff.
Yeah.
So we have that, and then we have the bit openings at ten, and then we have Farrington at eleven.
So you're saying that afternoon, perhaps, do the interviews, have McLean County here, and then?
That's what I would do.
Yeah, I would.
I would have a certain special meeting.
So far, yes. So far, yes.
I would try to squeeze it all in the middle, because it's not gonna work.
Okay.
I just don't want conversations to be rushed based off of other timelines on the agenda.
So potentially start interviews at one? Or are we thinking something else? I'm, I'm open, I'm just.
Sounds about right. We do our interviews at one and then.
Does everybody want like a bite for lunch, or just bring a lunch and start at noon or eleven thirty or something, or?
Well, we have to have specific time for the interviews of the people we're gonna interview here. And I don't want.
Yes, I think you're asking, are we gonna do interviews at noon?
That's what I mean, or does everybody want a hour break? Like, you know, say our meeting ends at noon and we don't start the special meeting till one, does everybody want that, a break?
Does everybody have time, first of all, May first in the afternoon to do this?
Yes.
I think that's the first question we gotta tackle.
Yes, my suggestion would be have the interviews at one o'clock, and then have Oliver and McLean County here.
Well, Oliver could be in on the interviews, because it's.
He, he's supposed to be.
Yeah, like, so they're.
I'm just saying, so we have the interviews, and then after the interviews, we meet with the counties. But how long do you want to allocate for the interviews? So that's what I was getting to, was one o'clock interviews, two o'clock special meeting, another special meeting to. Because you don't want to say one thirty, that's, you're gonna have, you're gonna get your interviews. You, you just said you don't want to rush the interviews, so that'd be fifteen minutes an interview if we have two of them, if we go at one, one thirty.
I just wanna say, I mean, if, if you're thinking about doing like a lunch or a break in between, if you've got like, there is a line of questions about those bit openings and some of the alternates, I, I could see the meeting going past noon.
Right.
Yep.
So maybe you do one for a clock.
If you're making a break in between, you might want to start later than one.
Well, that bit opening was just for the.
That's Airport Road.
Airport Road, yep, right. We have the Farrington petition at eleven.
That, that's the one that we're not here.
But you don't know, so other things come up.
True.
Right.
I, I think you just said the interviews start at one.
I think so. One and then one thirty, I think should be the other interview, and then two o'clock should be.
Half hour for each interview.
Yeah.
Okay. One o'clock.
May first.
And you, you want a half hour for each interview?
Yep.
Okay, one o'clock for one of them, one thirty for the other, wha- whatever. Whoever decides to, to in, inform the people that we're gonna interview, just set a time.
That would, Alice says.
Alice, okay, Alice can tell us.
Yeah, Tanya.
And then two o'clock, we'll have the three counties. And of course, we gotta have Daryl and McLean County say, yeah, they could be here at two.
Right. When I talked to Daryl earlier, he said he would be able to, when I talked to McLean, they said would, they would as well, but I will double check with them, because I thought that might be in the morning.
So for now, that's all.
Not in the afternoon.
Then for now, that's the way we'll plan it. One, one thirty interviews, two o'clock tri-county meeting for EM.
Okay.
Until otherwise, no doubt. Okay. Anything else on the EM?
Nope, I think that's enough.
Twenty twenty-four election inspector appointments.
We have asked Gordon Hoffner to be our vote by mail inspector, and Donna Hanson will be our Hazen City Hall inspector on election day. We're just asking for a motion to appoint them as our twenty twenty-four election inspectors and approve the county auditor to fill any vacancy that may exist for the twenty twenty-four primary and general elections if they would come up.
And that's standard, like, that's what usually happens.
Do I have a motion, motion for that? I don't want to try and repeat what Gwen just said.
So you said Gordon Hoffner?
Gordon Hoffner would be our vote by mail inspector, and Donna Hanson is our Hazen City Hall inspector.
And then, um, the auditor to fill in?
To, if, to fill any vacancy that may exist.
Vacancy for?
In case either one of them wouldn't be able to come in, say if they got sick that day or something, that we could appoint somebody else to fill that position.
Okay, okay.
And that was for primary and general?
Correct.
Who made that motion?
Nobody.
Nobody yet.
I'm gonna ask who made that motion?
I think Liza's going to.
Yeah, I was starting to. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint for the twenty twenty-four election inspector for vote by mail as Gordon Hoffner. For the twenty twenty-four election inspector appointment for the Hazen District as Donna Hanson. This would be for the primary and the general elections. I didn't know we caught up.
That's what she wrote on here, yeah.
Okay, I was making sure you got it written down, that's all. And that the county auditor be able to appoint others if there's vacancies in those positions.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Was the auditor to appoint, or was the auditor to fill the?
To fill, sorry, fill.
I guess it's either way, you know, fill it. They would.
Fill it themselves, like Carmen would fill in that position?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Somebody else.
Yep. Somebody an actual appointment.
Verbiage.
Then it would be a point, yes.
Yep, it'd be appointment.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Liza?
Well, I got one question. I mean, primary and general, do we want to, I mean, a lot of things can happen between now and then. It's like, by this fall is, um, I, I don't know, do we want to look back at it? If something changed, do we, do we just want to appoint it? For the auditor, or do we want to look at it, something again? I'm just thinking outside the box at something, see, something happens to one of these two people, I don't know.
You could do just the primary, and then we could come back later for the general when we get that all started.
I understand your, what you're getting at. I think what the auditor would be looking at is like a last minute thing instead of calling a special.
Well, I, I get what you're saying, but I mean, I agree, but.
And I know your concern about.
But whatever, I guess it's just my thought process on it.
If one of them decided to next week that they didn't want to do it anymore, that the auditor disappoint someone, I, I get that, too.
I can understand the last minute thing, but if something came up, uh, car accident, whatever, I don't know. You know, I mean, not, I don't wish that on anybody, but I'm just saying that, um, things happen. I just think that we should be approved by, you know, somebody by the voters anyways, like, like, just picking it out. That's just my thought. I don't know, if we, I would have a little bit more say in it than what we're, we're doing.
Well, we either, um.
Do one and then do the other.
We send the motion, or you amend the motion, or.
Yeah, we, we don't.
Or we leave it as is.
It's just my discussion, because we can vote, too.
So do you wish to amend the motion?
I didn't make it, I don't know.
I mean, anyone can amend it.
You can amend it, though, correct?
Anyone can amend a motion.
I'll make, I'd like to amend the motion to just for the, the primary then.
I'll second that.
Who seconded it?
Jamie.
Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean will vote, aye. Now on the original motion, Jamie?
I didn't make it, Liza.
That was me. Liza? Liza? Aye.
Liza, well, just second. My question was, Liza made the original motion?
Correct.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Where in the heck am I? Oh, I'm on the wrong line here, sorry. Oh, okay.
I'm still in favor of going home.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie? And Jean, aye. I was way up on your duplicate warrant. Sorry about that.
You were just calling the abstract then.
Okay, so as it stands, um, that's just for the primary.
Yep.
Primary. Okay. Extension measure and approval.
That's in the packet.
Yep.
It's highlighted, there's color on it.
If you find yellow, you got it.
So they're just asking for approval to ed, explain the measure?
Right, this would be just to put this in the, in the newspaper and out there, just so that we can get some, um.
Education.
Education out to the voters as to what the measure's about.
Is the measure, I know what the measure is, but is that just for the, the, um, primary? Or is it going to the big general?
No, it'd be one, if it's a major, it's just the one election.
Which is, which one is it?
The primary.
Yeah, the primary.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the ad.
Jamie will second.
Any further discussion? Okay, if I can follow my own writing here. Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. County nurse quarterly report.
I'll move to approve Amber, or Heidi's report.
I'll second, it's Liza.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Uh, recorder fees.
I'll move to approve the recorder fees, Jamie, for whatever month this is. Janu-, uh.
How much are they?
Thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
We need to do them all individually, because there's a January, February.
Yep, I can do it individually. Uh, Januaries.
December, one says December fees.
Well, it's December fees that were turned in in January, and that was three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. We have February's was three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents, and March is six thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents.
Which is, says technically are February fees.
Okay, Jamie made motion to.
I'll move to approve all three, but if we want to do them separate, we can do that, too.
I'm okay with all three.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Um, Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. I think that should pass. Health insurance.
So there's been some question that has come up, and maybe, maybe Gwen knows the answer, maybe, I'm overthinking it, maybe Don knows the answer. Um, but Candy brought it up, and I checked with the road department. They're all having health insurance come out of their budget, but none of the general funds on their transmittals, it's coming out. Does, since we're paying the hundred percent, does that money need to be amended and go back into their budgets?
We just, this may be a paper nightmare, but it's been asked because that money's coming out and it's. We, we, we were aware of it, we figured it out.
You're just, because people have said they can't hear you sometimes. I'm sorry.
I know.
I've been keeping an eye on the health insurance fund, that two nine three five that we were gonna pull that ten percent on, and it hasn't been dropping. And so it was getting me a little, you know, it should be, because, you know, we're paying that ten percent. So then we did a lit, Candy brought in her thing, and it came up that, um, we had, we're transferring the toll, the whole hundred percent out of those accounts, and Gwen can explain this way better than I can.
Instead of taking just the ninety percent out, I was taking the hundred percent out of those accounts and putting it into the, the two nine three five account, the health fund. What I need to do is I need to go back and correct that. I need to go back and take the ninety percent, put that ten percent back to those funds, and so that it comes out of the health fund. I was doing that wrong. So when that gets corrected, those amounts will show up correct in the budget sheets.
Okay, I just, it got brought up yesterday, and then I had looked at a few others, and they weren't coming out. I'm like, maybe it's something I'm missing with the general fund, or maybe, and then I asked the road department, because I'm like, they're the only one, other one really not coming out of the general fund. So I just wanted to make sure that we did this hundred percent, but then it wasn't an oversight on anybody's part that we need to.
Is that a journal entry, or is that a reentry?
It'll be a journal entry.
Okay.
Yeah, we had talked about it initially, because I was like, how do I do this? And then we didn't really, I guess it wasn't.
Yeah, we threw around a whole bunch of things.
Yeah.
We threw around only pulling the eighty percent out for the next three months to make up for it. But the cleaner way to do it is just to pay the ten percent back in and then go from here, so.
So that it won't come out of hers or the road department?
The ten percent won't. It'll come out of the health fund.
Okay, I just saw.
It'll be an internal paperwork.
I mean, for, the road department has a lot more money to play with than the landfill has to play with, so it was.
Very important.
Yeah.
No, but it's good that our departments are looking at their sheets that way, so that they, I mean, so, kudos.
That's all, that's all I had with that, is make sure, I was understanding it, but it was a concern, so.
Okay, you got your question answered then. Um, Scoria landfill.
Uh, Candy's out of Scoria, and we got rain yesterday and it's really muddy. Um, she just said to me, she, she was originally getting, gonna get some from Fisher, Leroy Fisher, um, but he's not quite ready to go with that. She did call Randy Byram. Um, he's significantly more, and we would have to haul it. Um, she's waiting to hear from Trotter Construction, because it sounds like they maybe have some Ebola Bay, but she, I haven't heard back in this meantime, but you know, the road department also has some Scoria, like, I'm not sure how, if we either want to go with Randy, get her a few loads to, because she essentially yesterday had to shut down the landfill because of the mud mess, nobody could get in or out. So, um, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on what we can do, or just make, approve a few loads to Randy till Leroy can get up and going, because he was cheaper.
Randy was at four twenty a load?
Four twenty, a belly dump was four twenty and an end dump was two sixty.
And that's what, that was, uh, without trucking.
That was us hauling it. It sounded like he didn't have the abilities to truck to us currently.
Leroy was two hundred.
Two hundred.
Without trucking and four hundred with.
Yes.
And that's per load, or what?
Per load.
Okay.
I know there's some, I saw it the other day, that I know there is some at the land, uh, at the county shop, where I mean, till we can get by, till we get going, or. But the stuff, I'm not sure what Randy's selling, if he's selling pit run or screen fill, and the stuff that, uh.
Yeah, she said it was the bigger chunks, so whatever, that.
That's the pit run, then, because that's what, uh, Leroy has, too, is pit run, I asked him.
Well, if we just need a load or two to get us until we can get.
She needs about twenty loads.
Okay, that's a little bit more than.
Well, but she could get by with a few loads to patch a few spots so that we can get garbage trucks in and out in a few, and up where they need to go.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it's a load or two just to get the haul roads.
We can get some.
And then we can get quotes for the, the. And then we can get quotes for the, the total amount.
We can get some off from the county shop then for a couple loads, there's enough.
I was just gonna say, can we get like two loads for now that'd get, get, that'll take care of the problem in the meantime and then see where we can get some Scoria from? Yeah, secure some, get some bids or.
And maybe we should have brought up while Ken was here, I didn't know what Ken's thoughts were on the situation, but.
Yeah.
I wanted it brought up if we needed, if nobody felt that the road department's Scoria was an option, then we needed to make some motions on getting some for Randy for the time being.
I don't see why we can't go get some, I mean, that's just sitting there, why we can't use some of that till we get to, to get her by until we do something different.
If we got a load or two.
That's not gonna affect that pile.
Yeah.
I mean, there's more, there's, not a lot, but there's twenty, thirty loads or more laying there.
Right, so if we took a couple from there and then got prices to replenish that and then the stockpile at the landfill, I think we'd be fine.
Right, let's do that.
Yeah.
Get her by and then figure it out.
So Rick, do you want to reach out to Ken?
I will talk to him on the way home here, yeah.
All right.
And then direct.
To touch base with Candy to work out.
Yeah, then direct Candy to uh, get some quotes.
She's, yeah, waiting on this last one.
Okay.
We have, we have two, but waiting for Trotter now.
Okay, uh, PERS for Jim.
Yep, so in your human resources update, that Alice sent us out. She indicates in there that um, the estimate, estimate for PERS correction to ending PERS, um, that the amount owed to Jim's is significantly more than what Alice had calculated. The reason is they use the entire wage as she had just used the, a portion that he was missing that she thought. So she gave me a copy of what the actual amount is. But in talking to Jim in the hallway before this, he was told to pay his portion directly to Mercer County. So I have adjusted this to include what Jim's portion is on there too. So the current amount, including Jim's portion that he will pay, which is four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, is now twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents, which includes Jim's portion on that, so that way we have just one check going to PERS.
And this was very part of PERS?
Correct. It won't be a check going to him, Liza, it's actually ACH to them. They take an automatic deduction.
Oh, okay.
So, just so you know.
An automatic deduction.
Yeah, just so you know.
But just one, so it wouldn't include, that would include Jim's portion that he sends to county.
So do we have to make a motion on it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to change the amount to twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-two cents to include Jim's portion to be paid to Jim Hoppers, PERS.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And this will settle that.
Is that the interest part that you're including? Is that what it is? You're saying Jim's portion, is that the interest?
Jim had to pay.
Pay in a certain.
Even the amount that you had calculated, you had a portion for Jim to pay and a portion for the county to pay.
Right, so there's interest on that, so that's what I'm asking. You're saying Jim's portion, but I'm just wondering.
I don't know, they all have written on here just Jim's portion.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically. Risk management interest, yes.
Oh, okay, interest is included?
Is that on here?
I didn't, I don't see it in my packet either, it's not. But that includes it.
Okay, and this will settle that.
The risk management PERS that he has not, hasn't paid since.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. That, I ran, don't have any more. Am I missing anything on your other business?
Just portfolio updates.
Correct, that's all that's left? Okay, J, I'll do mine first, I have none. Um, Rick?
All right, we, we went through pretty much everything we've done with the road department, extension office, uh, I don't have any report there right now. I know we have to, I did have a con, a meeting with uh, over the phone and I have to have a, they want to have a, set up a monthly meeting with them, so we'll probably, I'll be looking at that in the future, um. The other one was, uh, I don't know if we can, if we do this on the portfolio update, but we have a request from the sheriff's department to uh, do our nine one one coordinator. I don't know, we should add it to the agenda, I don't know if we can do this or not, I don't know what the rules are on that. You guys want to talk about it or what?
It's.
Mercer Oliver nine one one coordinator proposal from the sheriff's department, yeah.
I think it was initially thought that the nine one one addressing M O U on the other business was.
That's what I had thought it was, but I didn't realize it was.
There was a second one in there from N E J.
So I didn't put this on the agenda, do we want to, can we talk about it or not?
Well, we can talk about it, um, we should have it on the agenda if we can make any motions.
Then probably just leave it.
Just leave it till next, two weeks, put, put it on the next one, man. Uh, that's, I think that's pretty much what most pressing things with the sheriff's department at the moment, but we don't have anything else new right now. That's what I have with my updates.
Travis?
Fair board, uh.
Oh, sorry.
I just thought of that one. Fair board, uh, we're moving fair forward with that, the hairball thing with in the fall, um. Most, all, everything is, I think I reported that the donkey thing was off, but it's back on, I found another one. We revamped it a little bit, we're starting on Wednesday, I talked to Travis on that, some of that, but. All, all in all, the schedules coming together and we have a few things that we gotta do, but we're uh, other than grounds update things, we're getting ready to go.
Does the extension office still have a position open in, in the sheriff's deputy, right?
The sheriff's deputy, I know for sure is still open.
I think the extension office is.
I think they, they had a couple applicants, it should be in Alice's thing here.
I read it somewhere, but then I couldn't.
I thought I read it somewhere.
Check her website, oh, at the top.
Yeah, there was a application.
Okay.
Extension.
Three applications received from Indeed and she forwarded them to Craig.
So I don't know what date I'm on yet.
Right.
And the deputy sheriff is still open?
Correct.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
So, yeah.
Travis?
Um, mine's gonna be pretty short, uh, P and Z not having one this month, um, no library board meeting this month, water resource board. Well, didn't have one this month or is not having one this month and um, that's all I have. Oh, that's right, McKenna's tomorrow, thanks. So nothing to report at this one.
Is that for sure then? What time?
Five, at the six.
Liza?
Uh, Alice did a nice job about printing up her update and I've asked her to continue to do this since that HR position is so new, I think it's very important that we get all this information in this form, so she'll continue to do those updates for us. Um, ambulance, we had our meeting last night, you know, they were given information that a board is looking at putting both Hazen and Bula together as a group as opposed to having them apart. If they put them together, then that means they'll be up over their seven hundred calls per year, which would mean that they would be out of the running to apply for the grant that usually gives them the monies to get the new ambulances. So um, Marcy was gonna go to a meeting on that tomorrow to see if she can try to convince them to leave it as it is so that we can still be able to apply for those grants for those more expensive units. Because those ambulances are extremely expensive. And they are also working on the taxing district and they were gonna talk to Carmen, probably didn't get a chance to, but they were going to get ahold of her to see if they could possibly do that meeting after our meeting on May twenty-first at six thirty. But they're still waiting to be able to touch base with Carmen on that because Carmen needs to hold that meeting. Um, they are having a lot of trouble keeping paramedics on because of the wages, so we will be talking a lot about the wages for across the board for the ambulance. And we'll probably need to increase them possibly significantly in order to keep paramedics on board over there.
And they run a lot.
And they do.
They add a lot of calls.
They do. And that's.
It just stinks that they penalize us when we try to be more economical.
Right.
But, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully that they leave things as is, so that way they can still be able to apply for those grants. And we give her a bunch of different avenues and different things to present to them as to why it would be important to stay that way too. We'll see how it goes though.
Okay, Jamie?
Mine's pretty short, um, Candy, it's been wet and muddy out there. Um, working on Scoria, Jim, the, for building and maintenance, they were, they've been here, core facilities, working on our chillers. Got um, things installed, things are going well. Uh, social services in West Central are both tomorrow, L A P C is not till May. Think that's about it, kind of in a mid-month. Between meetings.
What, what's that?
I got one other thing I'd like to add to, who's ever out there watching, is that, for the employees and stuff, I would like to thank each and all of you for what you do and appreciate each and every one of you, so I do know that we do uh, we do consider what you guys do and we do appreciate all of you.
I do have one other thing too, now that. Thanks for that. Um, the wage committee that we've put together has met twice and we're leaning, or while we're working on trying to establish um, base uh, pay for different departments and then we're looking at um, a couple options, whether to do just having the standard um, uh, standard of living raise and then um, possibly putting in instead of a step system, like years of service. So like if somebody worked here twenty years, we have a base rate here, but they've kind of had some increases that were based on longevity. Then when they're replaced with somebody fresh, they go back down here, so it's, and then it's not subjective, it's more objective, but we're still working, so. Um, I'll update a wage committee as we continue, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, media adjourned.
And I adjusted it because before we, she had the Jim Hoppers thing. What do I, do I do anything else or do I just go back to Alice?
Not being such a Sunday, and I know when I spoke to her, it seemed a little bit, she thinks someone was talking a little bit off. From what Jim had told was her.
His part would be?